Blessed those that are on the front lines to protect this city and our country as well. We also ask that you lift up Councilman Hussey, give him peace in time of life. Good morning, Pastor. Or we just ask that you read us, and we ask this man.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome. I'll now call to order the Monday, August 20th, 2018 City Council Meeting. Mrs. Donaldson, roll call, please.
Fitzwater.
Present.
Graham.
Here.
Hensley.
Here.
Hussey. Kimna.
Here.
Mahalovich.
Here.
Prather.
Here.
Schreiber.
Present.
Ward.
Here.
Wiseman.
Present.
Item three, is there a motion to adopt the agenda? Councilwoman Ward?
Madam Mayor, at this time, I would like to make a motion to move off the informal calendar, 021, and place it after 5:00 E.
Okay, there's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so that means the item 2018-21, the School Street Historic District, which is at the, on the informal calendar, will be pulled off the informal and taken up after 5:00 E. One other quick thing on the agenda, we have several different items that people may be here to speak about tonight, so we talked about across the hall, the possibility that some charter amendments could be placed on the informal, of course, without having the chance to have that discussion, that decision hasn't necessarily been made, but want to let people know, trying to see if people have signed up to talk about that. We do have, someone signed up to speak on number 40 charter change, so, oh, a couple of people. Yes, so, which is fine, and want to just let everyone know that we would still welcome that input, and as with anything, it could end up being placed on the informal, so just out of respect for everybody who's here, want to let them know, but still encourage everyone to come and speak during that item on the agenda. All right. And I want to take a moment to recognize Boy Scouts that are here this evening, I think we have some in the back, maybe? Do we have, hi there, welcome. Would you like to come up to the podium and say your name and what school you're from? We always like to give our Scouts an opportunity to say where they're from, or you can stand up and say where you're from, if you'd like, from there? Okay, welcome. Oh, we have, we've got a few of you back here. Oh, yeah, definitely, come forward, and you can let us know your name and what school you're from, and maybe if you're working on a certain badge, you can just speak right in there into the microphone. Welcome, we're glad to have you all. Welcome.
Hi, I'm Sam Fick, I'm from Jeff City, working on the Communication Merit Badge. We have to go to a City Council meeting and just observe what's going on.
You picked a good one. Welcome.
Hello, my name is Randy Vassos, I'm from St. Peters', and I'm also working on the Communication Merit Badge.
Wonderful, welcome.
My name is Ethan Tobin, and I'm working on the Communication Merit Badge, and I'm from St. Peter's School.
Welcome, we're glad to have all of you, and appreciate you being here this evening, and good luck with your badges that you're working on. All right, item four, miscellaneous agenda items, we'll invite Mr. Kroll to recognize our outstanding August Employee of the Month Service Award recipient, Becky Hurst.
And I will invite Becky Hurst to come forward, and the Director of Human Resources, This is Becky.
That's Gail.
So congratulations to Becky Hurst, City of Jefferson Human Resources Specialist, for receiving the City of Jefferson Outstanding Employee Service Award for August 2018. The recognition is not only for the specific examples referenced in the nomination form that I'll be reading in a few minutes, but also in recognition of all the service Ms. Hurst provides to the citizens and employees of the City of Jefferson on an ongoing basis. So, some of the comments that were mentioned in, actually, various nomination forms are as follows. Ms. Hurst is always willing to drop whatever she is doing to help others. She helps point each employee in the right direction, whether it is human resources or wellness-related. Ms. Hurst is creative and takes the lead when asked to do special projects. She happily steps in when there are human resources or wellness-related questions. Ms. Hurst is always welcome, is always timely with her work, and helps encourage others to participate in many of the city's activities and events. Ms. Hurst has a positive attitude and always has a smile on her face. She is pleasant to work with, and we can count on her to get things done. Ms. Hurst is an invaluable member of the Human Resources Team in the city. In the three years Ms. Hurst has been with the city, not only has she cross-trained to learn all aspects of the department, but she has taken the lead in various programs. Ms. Hurst asked if she could create an Employee Involvement Committee to plan events for all other city employees to enjoy. She has taken the lead in chairing the committee, and with the assistance of some dedicated coworkers, the committee has planned and hosted numerous events throughout the year for her coworkers to enjoy. Ms. Hurst's leadership with the committee has done this on a limited budget and with a big smile on her face. Ms. Hurst always acts with professionalism and discretion. In her role, she receives reviews and receives a great deal of confidential information, and coworkers do not have to worry about their information being shared. She takes ownership of her job responsibilities, ensures that they are completed in a timely manner. Ms. Hurst's significant contributions to the overall quality and life of the city are recognized and appreciated, so congratulations and thanks to Becky Hurst, City of Jefferson Human Resources Specialist, for receiving the City of Jefferson Outstanding Employee Service Award for August 2018. And I know Gail had a few comments she wanted to mention as well.
I think Steve pretty much covered it with the write-up, but I just wanted to add that we truly are blessed to have people like Becky to work with on a daily basis. She really is a champion for her coworkers, for future coworkers, and really for the citizens of Jefferson City, so I'd just like to congratulate you, Becky, on this well-deserved award.
And you have somebody here you want to introduce?
Oh, my fiancee.
Yeah. And you're welcome to come to council meeting anytime, so congratulations, Becky.
Yes, congratulations, Becky. You provide outstanding service, and we are so fortunate to have you, all of the wonderful things that you do to help cheer on our city employees, they're so meaningful and much appreciated, so, and again, you're Ms. Hurst, but soon to be Mrs., and it's exciting to have your fiancee here to support as well, so we're very happy to have you both here, but again, we appreciate it. I know firsthand all the work you do in the front office, oftentimes taking calls that are referred to the mayor, and you do such a wonderful job communicating with constituents when they reach out to the mayor's office, and really appreciate all the extra work that you put into it, and all with such a wonderful attitude and so pleasant, so, thank you. We'd like, on behalf of the council, to present you a city coin, so we'll take a picture up here in the front, and then council will come up here, too. Item five, public hearings, item A.
Bill 2018-33, An Ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, Amending Chapter Three Advertising and Signs.
Mr. Sanders?
Mr. Barron's going to do this tonight, please.
I'm sorry, Mr. Barron, yes. I knew that, you told me that, I forgot, thank you.
This bill would be a general refresh of Chapter Three of the City Code, Advertising and Signs. There's, would be a number of edits, deletions, and additions incorporated into Chapter Three with the passage of this bill. It is something that has been, staff has spent some time drafting, and is a fairly lengthy bill, I think, coming in at over 30 pages, as it's a general review of the entire D of Chapter Three that was undertaken. Most of the amendments fall within Chapter Three, Article One, the chapter's divided into multiple articles, and the bill is actually a deletion of Article One and re-establishment because of the number of edits within that article were too numerous to track in the normal strike-through underlying manner. It was largely preempted by recent Supreme Court ruling dealing with temporary signage, and so staff, in dealing with temporary signage issue, took the opportunity to do, again, a general refresh of the chapter, and so that's one of the reasons why it's a fairly lengthy bill. And so, the effect of the council bill, within the council packet is a four-page staff summary that tries to outline the changes in the council bill, basically trying to outline the notable changes that are proposed within the council bill. There are a number of minor changes, minor tweaks to definitions and other language, but in general, the council bill accomplishes the three things up on the screen, it fixes a number of technical items that have been identified by staff since the last fairly major edits to the signed code were done in 2011. It proposes a fairly small number of changes based on variances in staff experience in processing sign permits, raising the height, allowable height of building-mounted signs, and a few other items, as outlined again in the four-page staff report. And then, third, addresses a recent Supreme Court ruling pertaining to temporary signage, and that's where the heaviest edits are within the bill. And so, as discussed at the last meeting, this item appeared in front of the Planning and Zoning Commission. Planning and Zoning Commission did recommend approval of this bill, but with some edits dealing with the number of temporary signs that would be permitted within residential zoning districts, I believe is their primary concern. When reviewing, when researching temporary signage issues, we, of course, conducted a number of hours of research on this topic before bringing this bill forward. It was fairly common for other cities to have some sort of limit on the number of signs that would be allowed in a, actually, in any setting, especially a residential one, and so the initial draft that went in front of the Planning and Zoning Commission did have limits on the number of signs that would be allowed in residential zoning districts, it differed based on whether it was a political season or not. The Planning and Zoning Commission voted to actually remove that language, so there would be no limit to the number of signs allowed on a residential property. Staff brought this item up at the last council meeting and proposed, actually, some language that would actually reestablish some of those limits, so staff drafted a council bill, which was introduced at the last meeting, that was as the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended, with no limits on the number of temporary signs in residential districts, there'd be still limits on temporary signs in commercial districts. Staff brought forward a proposal to actually reestablish those limits in the form of a council amendment sheet, and then that was approved by the council to actually reestablish the number of temporary signs allowed in a residential district at 10, much higher than the original four to six that was in the original draft. And then also raised the number of signs that would be allowed in the commercial districts up a little bit. This was done largely based on, we had the benefit of it being in election season, being able to drive around and do kind of an informal survey of how many signs are on some of these properties, and knowing what is proposed, and whether or not, you know, what we see out there during that election season would meet what is proposed with this bill, and what we saw is that it probably wouldn't, and therefore drafted, kind of came up with those new numbers to reestablish the bar a little bit higher, so that if approved in the form of a substitute bill, we believe that most properties out there would conform to the temporary sign rules that are within that substitute bill. I have a couple slides that break down what would be allowed as far as temporary signage. First deals with commercial industrial districts. The current code does not allow a lot of the freestanding commercial signage, and this would be no change to that. The current code deals with window signage a little bit differently, and staff would actually propose, you know, the bill proposes to establish that as a percentage of window space, and to allow a minimum amount of building-mounted temporary signage. As far as non-commercial signs, the numbers are one per street frontage with a maximum size, but then during election season, that number increases dramatically for four additional signs per street frontage. So for example, a commercial lot on a corner could have basically 10 signs up during an election season, and if you, I believe the best example of that is the corner of Southwest Boulevard and Route C, where we witnessed about that many signs, and so, you know, again, something that would fall into what would be permitted with these amendments. And then also allowing some other things in the downtown district, especially sandwichboard signs are somewhat popular, however, right now, they're technically prohibited, but to establish them as an allowable form of signage. In the residential districts, the substitute bill, again, would establish small signs a maximum of 10 per property. There wasn't necessarily anything incredibly scientific about that, except that it places some sort of cap, so that it would prevent someone from using literally an infinite number of signs as the upper limit to the detriment of, you know, visual detriment of Outside that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. Again, the staff summary, the four pages, tries to outline the changes. If there's anything specific, I'd be happy to add more color to it.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Barron? Councilman Prather?
Did you say originally that P&amp;Z approved it to be unlimited, and then staff changed it, recommended something different, and you went back to P&amp;Z, they approved staff's recommendations?
No. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended that the limits be stricken. Staff brought that recommendation to the council with another staff recommendation on top of that to reestablish the limits. It did not go back to P&amp;Z.
All right, thank you.
Councilman Graham?
Mr. Moehm, if you could, could you give me the rationale behind this, please?
Sure. Regarding the staff preference to have a limit on temporary signs in residential areas, what we are primarily concerned about, or at least, at least the law department is concerned about, is the weaponization of temporary signs. If it is truly unlimited, then there is no limit that someone could put a temporary sign, so, you know, 1,000 signs, 100 signs, you would hate to see someone not use these for expressive purposes, but for the purposes of annoyance, or for, you know, spite against their neighbors, or something like that, and so what staff has come up with is a number that, based on some informal surveys of the city, would accommodate even the most enthusiastic user of temporary signs, but still has an upper limit, so that way, signs aren't used for non-expressive purposes, where, you know, someone could build a fence with temporary signs, or, you know, put hundreds of them, you know, to get back at their neighbor for some dispute. That's really, our main concern is use of temporary signs for things that have nothing to do with expression of speech, and so we think some sort of cap in residential areas on temporary signs is necessary to prevent those types of really unwanted behaviors.
Further questions? Councilman Hensley?
Thank you. Do we find in either the Supreme Court case that was referenced earlier, or anywhere else, permission for a cap on the number of signs on residential properties?
So, the Re versus Town of Gilbert, there was a concurring opinion by Judge Alito that referenced the type of, of the type of regulations that would still be allowed by municipalities, and he made clear to say that the list was not exhaustive, but one example that he gave was the cities could put a regulation that limits the number of signs per mile, and so that is another way to do a limitation on number of signs.
Did he say per mile? I'm sorry.
He said, for example, a city could say no more than X amount of signs per mile of roadway. That's a type of limitation on a number of signs within a given city. I see this as the exact same thing. This is within a yard, a limitation on the number of signs, and falls into a category called a content-neutral-time-place-and-manner restriction, which comports with the, with the Constitution First Amendment.
So Judge Alito agrees. So when that 11th sign goes up, what are we going to do?
Well, it would just go through our regular enforcement program, you know, we, what we try to do is get voluntary compliance. Most times that 11th sign's going to go up, they didn't realize that they weren't allowed that 11th sign, and so we would work with them to get that removed. Lot of our enforcement is complaint-based, and so, you know, there's, there would be a neighbor who would say, hey, there's just a lot of signs there, go, please come check that out, and then ultimately, if we couldn't get voluntary compliance, it would be like any other type of zoning violation, and, you know, we have, we have the municipal court process to address that.
So, my guess is that rather than an over-enthusiastic political supporter, we'd probably just first see someone trying to make a point, and challenge the limit at any number. Are you fairly confident that at the end of the day, we prevail when challenged on that provision?
I believe this is false squarely within permissible time-place-and-manner restrictions. There's no, there's no, there's no attempt to look at the content of the sign, of what it says in enforcement, and when you do that, that's, you're on the right side of the law, it's just a matter of number of signs.
Okay, thank you.
Councilwoman Wiseman?
Thank you. If we don't have a specific limit on the number of signs, and we do allow unlimited signage, do we have a nuisance ordinance that would cover it otherwise if somebody did have 1,000 signs in their yard?
Attempting to enforce through nuisance where a specific law does not have any type of limitation would be extremely difficult. I think you would run into, I think you would run into some as-applied challenges to your enforcement through nuisance. That would be a real tough hill, that would be an uphill battle to fight.
Any other questions before we open the hearing? Councilman Graham?
Back to Ryan and to city staff, I must echo the words that my colleague Prather said in regards to this going to P&amp;Z, and then staff changing that to specify a number. As a sponsor of this bill, and as the person who will add the substitute bill, I am not willing to do that, based on the fact that it was changed from time it got to, from time it left out of P&amp;Z and came to this body. So I would not be offering a substitute bill to this. So, does that mean it needs to go back to P&amp;Z, or we're voting on the original thing that came out of P&amp;Z that says there is no limit?
Back, check me on this, Eric, but I believe that if the substitute were not taken up, the city council would be voting on a version of the bill that does not include any limitation on residential signs, residential temporary signs.
I am not offering a substitute bill to the rest of my colleagues.
Any further questions before we open the public hearing? Okay, Councilman Fitzwater?
The request from Planning and Zoning also discussed the setback provision, was that accounted for?
In the residential districts, that was removed, so the bill that is, you know, is before you, has no setbacks for signage in the residential districts. It does still exist in the commercial districts in the text of the bill, in the form of a 10-foot front setback from the street line, from the curb line for commercial signage. Staff recommended removal of that setback in the substitute bill, along with an actual increase in the number of signs for commercial areas within the substitute bill. If I may, if there's a desire to not have a limit on the residential districts, one potential route would be to offer up a substitute and remove that language, to strike that single line that would limit the number of signs in the residential districts. The substitute bill tried to accomplish three different things, one of them being re-establishing some sort of number of signs in the residential districts, one being raising the number of signs permitted within the commercial districts, and then the third, removing all language on the setbacks.
So if we didn't do the substitute that we have tonight, we went back to the original bill, it would still include the language that P&amp;Z tried to take out in regards to the setback?
No, they made no mention of setbacks in the commercial.
The original bill, then, how did it discuss the setback provision?
In the commercial or the residential?
In both.
A five-foot setback in the residential districts from the curb line, and a 10-foot setback in the commercial districts from the curb line.
So if we, if we were to bring up the original bill the way it is, it still has the setback provisions in it?
The bill that's before you, we removed the stuff that was recommended by Planning and Zoning, the limit on the number of signs in residential districts, and the setback within the residential districts. That's all they made, the edits, too.
If I may clarify, the bill that is in front of the council right now, and not the substitute, reflects 100% the recommendation of the P&amp;Z.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, at this time, we'll open the public hearing for Bill 2018-33. Is there anyone here who would like to speak on that bill this evening? Okay, seeing none, we will close the public hearing portion and take up Bill 2018-33.
An Ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, Amending Chapter Three Advertising and Signs.
Is there any further discussion or deliberation on the bill? And everybody's clear on? I don't think there's a substitute offered, so it sounds like it's the original bill, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Any further deliberation? Okay, roll call, please.
Fitzwater.
Aye.
Graham.
Aye.
Hensley.
Aye.
Hussey.
Aye.
Kimna.
Aye.
Mahalovich.
Aye.
Prather.
Aye.
Schreiber.
Aye.
Ward.
Aye.
Wiseman.
Aye.
Bill passes. Item B.
2018-34, An Ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, Adopting a Budget and Personnel Classification Plan for the City for the period of November 1st, 2018 to October 31st, 2019, and Appropriating Money in the City Treasury to Pay the Cost of Operating the City Government During That Period in accordance with the Budget.
Mrs. Miller?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The operating budget for the period November 1st, 2018 through October 31st, 2019 is been recommended for approval by the mayor. The proposed general revenue budget is projected to be $32,807,395.5, and with additional funding from other funds and for capital projects, it brings the total City of Jefferson budget for fiscal year 2019 to $65,681,530.53.
Thank you. Councilman Prather?
Madam Mayor, as we are still deliberating on the budget at this time, I would like to put on the informal calendar, please.
Okay, looks like that has been placed on the informal. Any questions of council? And the next budget meeting is this Thursday evening, 5:30. Item C.
2018-35, An Ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, Providing for the Levy of City Taxes and Establishing the Rate of Taxation for the City of Jefferson, Missouri for the year 2018.
Mrs. Miller?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. A state statute requires that cities establish their property tax rates on an annual basis. The proposed 2018-2019 budget has been prepared based on the property tax rate for general fund at .46, and the farm's pension rate at .0961, and that is the same rate as the previous year.
Thank you. Any questions at this time? Okay, seeing none, we'll open the public hearing portion. seeing none, we'll close the public hearing portion and take up Bill 201835.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, providing for the levy of city taxes and establishing the rate of taxation for the City of Jefferson, Missouri for the year 2018.
Any council deliberation? Roll call, please.
Graham?
Aye.
Hensley?
Aye.
Hussey?
Aye.
Kimna?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Weisman?
Aye.
Fitzwater?
Aye.
Bill passes. Item D.
201843. An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, changing, amending, and modifying the zoning code of the City of Jefferson by creating a new overlay zoning district to be titled the NR National Register Historic Overlay District, establishing regulations thereof, and amending the zoning map of the zoning code by establishing said district over seven existing National Register districts.
Mr. Moleman?
Thank you. This bill really does two things. So the first thing that it does is that it creates what is called the National Register Overlay District, or for short, the NR District. And then the second thing that it accomplishes, it imposes the NR District over seven areas within the city. And those seven areas in the city are coterminous with the city's current areas that are on the national, that are historic districts that are on the National Register of Historic Places. What we are trying to accomplish this bill is, there are instances in state and federal law where protections are carved out for places that are on the National Register of Historic Places, or historic districts generally. But occasionally, there are situations where it will require cities to take affirmative acts to claim or take advantage of those protections that are afforded to National Register places. And so what this bill is attempting to do is make that affirmative act, and say where state or federal law offers a right, a benefit, or protection to a place that is on the National Register of Historic Places, this is the city's affirmative act, so claiming those rights, benefits, or protections. And so this would work in any situation where there's some sort of affirmative act to do that. But in particularly, there was a new state bill this year called Bill HB 1991, and it dealt with deployment of small wireless antennas and associated equipment. And in that bill, it generally has a scheme where wireless companies are allowed to either co-locate their small wireless equipment on existing poles, or in some situations where existing poles are not available, to set new poles in the right of way to hold their wireless antennas. And these wireless antennas are colloquially referred to as the 5G rollout, and it is a different technology. Traditional cellphone technology, what you would see is very large antennas on top of very tall poles. And the industry is moving away, or supplementing really, that technology with smaller antennas on poles that are lower to the ground, because they use a different type of radio wavelength, a different type of technology to deliver cellular service. And so in HB 1991, it says that wireless companies can deploy these antennas in the right of way, and the bill really limits the ability of cities to have a whole lot of, say, where those will be placed and what they will look out, or what they will look like. However, in HB 1991, they carved out some protections for historic districts, or, as the bill put it, areas that are zoned as historic. And so when they use that word "zoned," that means that it was zoned through a process going through the P and Z Commission. And so this bill has been through the P and Z Commission, and that's really what we're trying to accomplish here. We're taking our National Register of Historic Places, Historic Districts, and, you know, which are established through a federal process, and taking them through a local process, so that way they can fulfill the requirement of being zoned as historic, to reach out and grab these protections that are afforded to historic districts in HB 1991. So first of all, generally applicable, any time that state or federal law would require an affirmative act to claim, you know, rights, benefits, or protections, this should accomplish it. But it also has the immediate effect of addressing such a state law. And the reason that staff is recommending that the rules be suspended to take up this bill this evening is because HB 1991 has a time limit on that, and it only applies to historic, or sorry, areas that are zoned as historic as of August 28th, 2018. And so if approved this evening, these areas would be able to take advantage of the carve-out protections for historic districts that's afforded under HB 1991. So we're trying to address a very specific problem, but also, in the future, if similar laws, you know, come about, or if there's existing laws that we need to look at in the future, we have taken the step of saying, where you are providing extra protections to historic places, we are reaching out and claiming those.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Moleman? Councilman Graham?
So these are guaranteed exemptions?
Yeah, I mean, this is as close as we can hew to the law as I can reasonably come up with.
And how big are these towers or these devices that they're planning on putting just anywhere in Jeff City?
Sure. Yeah, so generally, what we're looking at are towers that are any, or they're not towers, they're generally utility poles. So either streetlights, electrical poles, so anywhere in the 30 to 50 feet range is pretty generally how they'll, is how they'll present themselves. And the way they get installed is either they'll get installed on the side, kind of bolted in, into the side of a pole. That's kind of an unattractive way to do it. Or otherwise, they get placed on top of the pole, and they kind of make it taller. And a lot of times, there's sheathing or camouflaging techniques that go along with it. And what this bill would allow is to kind of work with cellular companies to make sure that, you know, if we have to allow these to be placed on a pole, we want them to look a certain way. It gives us more negotiating power to work with them to come up with a deployment that works for both the city and the companies.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Okay, at this time, we'll open the public hearing for 201843. Is there anyone here who would like to speak on that bill? Okay, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing portion and take up Bill 201843.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, changing, amending, and modifying the zoning code of the City of Jefferson by creating a new overlay zoning district to be titled the NR National Register Historic Overlay District, establishing regulations thereof, and amending the zoning map of the zoning code by establishing said district over seven existing National Register districts.
Any further council discussion or deliberation? Councilman, I'm sorry, did someone over here? No?
I believe we need to suspend the rules.
Oh, I'm sorry?
I'm sorry, I'd like to suspend the rules for this bill here.
Thank you. Are there any objections to suspending the rules? Okay, so now do we have to read it again? Correct? Okay, so now we will have third reading of 201843.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, changing, amending, and modifying the zoning code of the City of Jefferson by creating a new overlay zoning district to be titled the NR National Register Historic Overlay District, establishing regulations thereof, and amending the zoning map of the zoning code by establishing said district over seven existing National Register districts.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Hensley?
I abstain.
Hussey?
Aye.
Kimna?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Weisman?
Aye.
Fitzwater?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Bill passes. Item E.
201844. An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, amending Chapter 8 Buildings and Building Regulations pertaining to expansion of established local historic districts.
Mr. Barron?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This bill would edit Chapter 8 of the city code. Chapter 8 is dealing with building and building regulations, but as a portion of that chapter, the article within it, dealing with preservation and conservation. This bill comes to you from both the Planning and Zoning Commission and the Historic Preservation Commission, as that portion of the city code is really the instructions for the Historic Preservation Commission, so really under their review purview. But then also, as a development-related code, it, on advice of the Law Department, proceeded through the Planning and Zoning Commission, a formal public hearing process for recommendation by that body as well. The bill was initiated here at the city council level by instructions from the council, the staff, to put in place some process for amending local historic districts in order to be able to expand the boundaries of a district, which was brought up by a number of the public during the public hearing process for the School Street local historic district. Up on the screen is the text of the proposed code amendment. It would essentially allow for expansion of a district by anywhere from a single property or up to nine properties by petition of the property owner. That application would go through the Historic Preservation and Planning and Zoning Commission review before appearing in front of the council. Anything more than nine, so 10 or more properties would be processed in the same manner, requiring at least 75% of the signatures of that grouping, hopefully, of properties that would be proposed to be included within a district. The matter was reviewed by the Planning and Zoning Commission at their August 9th meeting, and was recommended for approval on unanimous vote. It was also reviewed by the Historic Preservation Commission at their August 14th meeting, recommended for approval by unanimous vote. It is scheduled for a public hearing tonight, as well as introduction, with potential rules suspended, as this matter does deal heavily with the School Street local historic district manner, which is sitting on the informal calendar. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions the council may have prior to opening the public hearing.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Barron? Councilman Prather?
Just clarification. This bill is just to establish the ability to amend a historic district?
That is correct. This bill has nothing to do with the School Street proposal.
All right. Thank you.
Councilman Mahalovich?
Is there anything that you know of that would preclude Quinn Chapel from being added to a historic district if one were established, the like the School Street?
With the passage of this process, putting something in place to allow for expansion of a district, then yes, Quinn Chapel could apply to be included in that district, if that's what your question was.
There's nothing that would preclude Quinn Chapel being included. I mean, nothing inherently within the language that would allow or disallow them to be included.
Not to my knowledge.
Okay, that's good.
Any further questions? Councilman Graham?
So when you say they could apply, under what auspices could they be denied?
And so application of certain review criteria, it goes in front of the Historic Preservation Commission for, again, review and recommendation, Planning and Zoning Commission as well. Ultimately, it'd be a city council action to whether to approve or deny that application. And so it would really be a question for the council.
So it doesn't go back to P and Z or Historic Preservation Commission, it just goes back to the council?
No. At first, it does rely on them applying, so they would have to make that decision to apply. No one can make that for them as a property owner. But if approved by the council, it would be approved. Denied by the council, it'd be denied. The council is the ultimate decision-maker.
I was just trying to get some reasons why someone would be denied.
The reason for denial would be because it does not meet the criteria. And so the historic district and the P and Z make recommendations. Does this meet the criteria? But ultimately, the decision would fall to the city council to determine, does this meet the criteria, and should it be added to the local district?
At the risk of beating a dead horse, because it might not be totally clear, this paragraph, about halfway down, says, "Applications to expand a historic district shall be reviewed under the same criteria set forth in subsection C, and under the same procedures applicable to original establishment of a historic district." So it would go through all the same steps as the original application, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
Thank you.
Councilman Graham?
I just thought that was the question that I was just asking. I thought it said it just coming from the council for approval. But he just said it goes back to the original steps.
Correct. Ultimate approval, ultimate approval is the city council.
But they need to go back through all the steps.
But it would have to go back through the HPC and the P and Z for recommendations from those bodies.
Councilman Fitzwater and then Prather?
I find it fascinating. We're dealing with a bill to address a concern that was shared at a previous council meeting before we've even dealt with the issue that originally generated the need for this issue. At that meeting, I supported drafting language similar to this as a piece of a broader concept, looking at the entire process, which I think we've potentially got some grant money that we think is coming to be able to do that process. My colleague asked a question, you know, again, it's going to have to go through a process. And it just fascinates me that we're dealing with an issue before we even have the issue. Well, we have the issue, but we're dealing with it before we even have a historic district that this is going to apply to. I support, and I think commented as we went through the demolition ordinance, which I guess has been about a year or so ago, concern or surprise that we did not have historic districts. So I support them in our community, local districts, done appropriately. But my comments at the last meeting were in regard to piecemealing this issue, not doing it right, and not having a track record of how we're going to do it for when we get application, too. So I'm probably not going to support this amendment, not because I don't support the local historic district concept. I just think when we do it, we've got to do the first one right, or we don't have a track record of how we take this thing down the line. So those are my comments on the amendment.
Councilman Prather?
We were discussing a process, application process. How long do you anticipate that process to take?
There's really two parts of that. The first part is preparation of an application. That's on the applicant to do, and so it's hard to say. But it's a substantial amount of work. You can probably ask the people that's gone through it. And so there's no saying. That's not under city control to figure out. But once an application is in, and it meets the requirements of an application, we're thinking that a 90-day process is probably where we're at, send it through HPC, P and Z, and then to the council. That's with no real hiccups along the way.
Thank you.
And just to make sure, Councilman Graham's question was answered correctly, because I'm not sure if I either heard the question differently or heard the answers differently, but there was one answer that it doesn't go to P and Z, and one that it does. But maybe I heard it differently.
It would go to P and Z. And I believe that is a requirement of state law under Chapter 89. It's that a development-type application, a change to land use and building controls, state law demands that the P and Z hear that.
Okay. Any further questions before we open the public hearing? Okay, at this time, we'll open the public hearing for 201844. Is there anyone here to speak to that this evening? Hi, welcome.
Hey, thank you. Thank you. I'm Nimrod Chapel, President of the Jefferson City in AAACP. And I came forward today because I have some questions, and I, too, have a concern that maybe this process is being rushed a little bit, because there's a lot of questions, like, what does a historic district do? How do you get into it? I've got people reaching out to me that think that they're in it, but they don't know, they don't have answers. And I was hoping that maybe we could just start there. What is it that this is his- What is it that this historic district would do? Is it one historic district, or is there many? And how do we decide what is the function of any particular district? Who's the sponsor?
I hope the city attorney can answer that, since...
Okay, I'm not sure what the proper process, whether that's the city attorney or the bill sponsor, or what. You guys tell me.
Well, I see a local historic district as something that's formed by a neighborhood. They go through the process of looking into the history, the architectural design of the buildings, the age of the buildings. And then they go through a process where they get together to decide on the design guidelines that they want to meet when they have to do any exterior renovations to their property. Like, if you have a brick building, any additions would be brick to that. Perhaps a district would want to allow front additions to a building, because that would hide and detract from the existing architectural structure of that original structure. It could address setbacks, that you want to keep the same setback of your streetscape, roof pitches, window sizes, door sizes. So, a district is more of a building regulation zoning code. You, it becomes an ordinance. So, anytime any owner wants to do any type of renovation to their building, they would have to contact the city for a building permit. And then, it would also have to go through Historic Preservation Commission for them to approve based on the guidelines that the neighbors turned in, and the council approved as an ordinance. And they would have to get approval through the Historic Preservation Commission in order for city staff to allow them a building permit to do their restoration work.
Okay, thank you. How many applications are currently pending?
This is the first local historic district that has been brought forward to us.
Why aren't city ordinances currently governing what alterations can be done in terms of buildings? Why aren't those sufficient?
Well, building codes usually deal with different types of structures. And when you're looking at a historic neighborhood, what is usually desired by those property owners is to retain that architectural style. So, what pertains to a historic neighborhood wouldn't pertain to something out in Eastland, our scenic drive, or, you know. So, I mean, other areas do, I'm sure, have, like, their homeowners, what are those called? Homeowners associations that allow, that govern the same, well, not as strict, but this is just, this is something for a historic neighborhood.
Sure, sure. What's the difference between this and the gentrification that's already swept through Jefferson City?
I don't understand your analogy, your parallel.
Well, I'm talking about using city resources and funds to facilitate neighborhoods and sections of cities, of this city, to be reclaimed, if you would, to be changed in its nature. And so, I'm glad that I'm here tonight, not only to learn about some of the other issues that have come up before this council, but on this issue in particular. We've already seen work go on in Jefferson City that has decimated what used to be, quote-unquote, "the foot," or "the black section of town," or held by a certain group of people. What is to stop a number of landowners from using this as a tool to come into a community and prescribe what's going to happen to the property that is either in that area, where that person in the community didn't have a voice, either due to economic or socioeconomic reasons, or worse, when the person who's next to that district is either not allowed to participate in whatever benefit that district may offer, or required to be held to a higher standard to those homeowners?
Well, that's why we directed staff for this amendment, because after the district was submitted, and it was going through its process, we heard from others who would like to be included in it. So, currently, our historic ordinance, district ordinance, doesn't allow anybody to submit an application to be included. I went through the same process in my depressed neighborhood on West Main several years ago, where I formed guidelines. With a historic district, you'd need 75 percent of the homeowners to agree to it. I only got 70. I say only, but that's a large amount for a neighborhood. So, I was able to apply for a conservation district. But it's exactly the same thing. Anytime any work needs to be done in that area to preserve the history and the architecture and the character and the streetscape, so we can keep those neighborhoods that are so important to our history, like the School Street area, which is an extension of the foot area, then this could be, this is a tool to help us do that.
Well, if the School Street is an extension of the historic foot area, so is my neighborhood, right over there by Mike Hill, right? I don't know of anything historic about that area, and maybe somebody else will have something more to say about that, but was there a city study done to determine what part of that was historic and why? What makes that historic?
Let me clarify a little bit, too, just to make sure we're staying on this particular item. We're not necessarily debating whether certain districts are historic or not. We're looking mainly at the process. And the historic district that was brought forward, it was brought to council's attention that it may not be as user-friendly to apply, and so, we're looking at ways. Now, whether or not this bill accomplishes that is what's being discussed, if it could be made better. But staff was directed to come up with an ordinance that would make the process better, not necessarily, we're not debating a specific district.
Sure, sure.
It's just the general process.
I don't mean to debate the School Street issue.
And I'm not sure about the, I know we have the, I haven't seen the minutes guideline, or the minutes on the screen, and I don't want to cut off any debate, but I know typically on the public hearing, I believe it's, isn't it the five? Just since we have so many people here to speak, I want to make sure we don't go too far.
Okay. And thank you very much. Let me just redirect my last question then.
Right. And regarding, you know, where you live, you could do the same thing.
My home is not historic. I'm not doing that. I understand you're saying that, and that's the intent of this particular thing, but this ordinance, in terms of what it will allow people to do, can be used defensively. We just got through going through this whole talk about signs being in somebody's yard, what would argue be a constitutional right. I would think that by the time that somebody buys a home or has a home that's willed to them by somebody that's a part of their family, that the idea that this could be used as a tool to diminish their ability to actually utilize that as a resource by putting stringent guidelines on people who already have issues and are overtaxed in other ways. I think that there are some significant issues that need to be addressed in terms of this ordinance and the underlying one. And until we get all that stuff worked out, that there's no time to move forward.
Let me make one point. These guidelines were written by those who own those homes in that area and was supported by those who...
You're talking about School Street, though, councilwoman?
Well, that's what we're...
Right. I'm not talking about School Street. I'm just talking about any historic district, because School Street may or may not occur...
I'm currently working on another one.
Wow.
So, you know, any neighborhood that owns their property, they can come up with, they could do the research.
I think you missed my point. And I want to know who in the city is reviewing the research that's been done in terms of establishing that a historic area is in fact historic? Who's that? Who's in charge of that? Do you have a historic research area within the city that will take that on, or is that being funneled through some other area?
We have a Historic Preservation Commission that it went through.
And that made it through?
Yes, it went through P&amp;Z and Historic Preservation Commission.
Well, maybe we need to start by looking at that. No more questions?
Thank you, and...
Senator, I had a question, a point of order.
Okay.
Are we discussing the establishment of a district or the expansion of a district? I'm confused. I thought we just talked about the expansion. We're not quite to the establishment, establishing a district yet. Could someone clarify that for me? I thought the public hearing was to expand, for expansion, not establish. Okay.
Okay. Pardon me. I'm not sure if, on this public hearing, if they're here to speak on the item 44 or on School Street, which is the informal calendar number 21. We'll make sure everybody speaks that would like to speak, so there won't be a problem with that. Everybody will have an opportunity to have their voice heard. But there is an order here, and I'm, after the speaker, I'll see if these are here to, which item they're here to speak on. So, welcome, and you can just state your name and...
Okay. And I'd say, good evening, Madam Mayor and city officials. My name is Mentha Bakari, and I reside at 1310 Linden Drive here in Jefferson City. I would like to speak on this piece that is supposed to have been amended to allow inclusion as opposed to exclusion. And I don't know exactly how this language can go, but implied inclusion is in the original application, where there's an entity that's mentioned in terms of its historical significance. However, that particular entity is now being told to apply. The other thing is, I keep hearing about the architectural design. Well, the criteria for the application is one or more, but I see that there's so much concentration on the architectural design. I'd like to hear some language put together to correct that, to be an exception to the architectural design, even if it has futuristic views, but contains two or more installed pieces from the old edifice if that particular building was relocated because of imminent domain. I'd like to see some language like that incorporated in this so-called amendment, so that in the future, if there's something that needs to be amended, we have an open area that we can look at. Now, of course, I'm thinking about Quinn Chapel right now, but if the language is changed the way I recommend it, that if it's evident in the original application, that this entity is indeed historic, which it is in regards to Quinn Chapel, and if the architectural design is futuristic in view, but has many of the materials from the old building in that it was relocated because of imminent domain, perhaps in the future, you'll have the same scenario. And if this language can be redrafted to include those kinds of things, we have no problem, do we? Thank you.
Thank you. There is a list here for the public hearing, so I will go through these names in the order they signed up. And I know there's a lot of things on the agenda tonight, so the public hearing is Bill 2018-44 about expansion of established local historic districts. And then the item on the informal, which will be, after we take this bill up, the next one will be 2018-21. So, for those that are here to speak on that. So, the first one we have is Erica Willis. Welcome.
Yes, hi.
Hi, good evening. Welcome.
Thank you. So, I'm not sure. So, I am a commercial realtor with H&amp;H Brokerage Group. I am here with my broker, and drill, Housman. We are, we have been charged with helping to sell the Lafayette Street project here in Jefferson City. I will say this, that representing developers to come in and provide services to the area would be a lot easier if we didn't have to go through many layers, such as a historic district designation, because it can hinder progress with the said developer. And, you know, when they're coming in and they're looking at working with city and revitalizing areas that are lacking services within a three to five mile radius, they are really looking at traffic counts. They're looking and considering the demographics of the area. So, I do honestly, on my side, implore you to really consider the effects that creating this historic district would add to the further development of the area. I think it's primed. We do have some interests from area developers, and, you know, again, I just go back to the fact that just adding layers, because it can create somewhat of an obstacle to continue development, for instance, even being able to tear down and completely start over to provide services to the area. You know, there is, you know, within a 16-mile radius, you know, to service the school, Lincoln University, as well as businesses and residents surrounding that area, that, you know, when they come in and they look at an area, you know, it just adds more time for a developer to have to go through and kind of fight through city government to be able to provide the services that they were commissioned to do. So, I'm assuming I was put on the agenda to share that information, so I really implore you once again to really consider that as a fact. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Okay. And then next, we have Andrea, or if you were together.
My name is Andrea Housman. I am the broker and owner of H&amp;H Brokerage Group. And as expressed, we have been brought and solicited to assist in the progress of the Lafayette Street project. And as I have witnessed and know the area very well, as my parents were students at the Lincoln University and have watched that area digress, to give it an opportunity to see regrowth, to give it an opportunity to see retail movement and commerce come back into our community, it is really critical that we offer that to this community as we talk about historical, we talk about minority communities that don't, you know, that don't have that development. We're giving an opportunity to see that back without allowing us to be moved out. So, if we can put that type of commerce in place, along with recognizing some of the historic concepts like our church and keeping those in place, perhaps we can take all of that into consideration and making sure that as we make decisions as a city government, that we look at the entire environment as a whole, not separating anything out, inclusive of the most important piece, and that is our church. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Councilman Mahalavich?
I think there might be a little confusion here. We're debating Bill 044.
I'm sorry?
We're debating Bill 044 as public testimony right now.
Correct.
And that is to determine whether or not Quinn Chapel could be amended into the historic district. So, without this amendment, Quinn Chapel could not be a part of the historic district. So, the amendment...
And what we're trying to express is whether or not it truly is a historic, Quinn Chapel truly is historic, but they're trying to hold on to homes in which don't necessarily have the true historic value. Is that correct?
So, do you favor the amendment that would allow Quinn Chapel to be a part of a historic district?
I favor Quinn Chapel being a part of the project in its inclusiveness.
And how does this amendment includes, include or disclude what you want?
I don't feel like we should hold on to properties that don't hold or sustain a value of historic nature, and I think that's part of the question, whether or not, I think there's two different components to that. Quinn Chapel has been excluded from the initial conversations. That was one thing, okay? And so, that's where I've expressed my concerns. As far as identifying whether or not these properties are of historic value is the true question and value, and whether or not we need to put any substance in making that determination. So, I'm not supportive, no.
Thank you. Next, we have Carol Beavers. Is Carol, if you still want to speak? Well, we'll go through the list here, and then whoever, even if you're not signed up, we will still, you will still be able to speak. Welcome.
Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Carol Beavers, and thank you, Mayor Turgeon and city officials. I reside at 726 Lafayette Street, and I do, I would like to state that I would support a change of the wording where it regards to the, and it's not up there anymore, but being, the extensions being abutted to the historic district that's in question. And the reason I state that is because there, as has been stated, the true community or historic district has been fragmented. And so there are other properties in the near-adjacent area that were, that was ravaged by imminent domain and by the unfinished urban renewal from the 60s and 70s. So there, so the, that neighborhood has been fragmented, and I think that there are other property owners in my area of Lafayette Street that would like to probably eventually apply to be included in the historic district. So since we're right now just talking about the historic district itself, I mean, the wording of the, how to apply, there are other properties that may want to, that may need to be taken into consideration, or they'll kind of be piecemealed by themselves to form their own historic district. So that's my comment. And if we could have rewording of the term "abutted," that would be under consideration of expanding that even to areas that have been separated due to such, such items as the eminent domain.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions? Okay. Next we have Charles Jackson, and I'll run through the list after Charles. Andrea, and then Robert Haslag, Julie Rungert, Chris Graham, Rich Callahan, and Patsy Johnson, Jocelyn King, Sheila Logan, Daniel Green, and Homer. Those are all the names we have signed up under public hearing, and then we have Mr. Chris Graham under the, under the charter amendment, charter change bill. Okay. Pardon me? And then we'll, and anyone, and Glover.
I'm here for something else.
For something else?
Yes.
Okay. So, so if we, if I call your name and you're here for something else, you can just let us know, since we have everybody signed up. So welcome, if you'd like to...
No, we are here for a problem, for charter change.
Okay, for charter change as well. And next is Andrew Sartone.
I also...
Okay. So charter change as well. And then Robert Haslag.
Okay. Yes, thank you.
Okay.
First of all, as I understand it, part of this resolution is to make it easier for districts, one to 10 buildings that are adjacent to a historical district, to come in without going through the whole process again, correct?
I don't know if I could speak to easy or not, but it provides a process to add to it established.
As long as the process can start from ground zero.
It's a similar process as the original application, but it is, it's a process that would allow someone to join an existing district.
Okay. Well, let me get to the point I want to make there. Regarding Quinn Chapel, first of all, I would like to echo the sentiments already that have already been expressed here tonight. And the only thing I would like to add is that everyone seems to miss is that a building is not historic simply because it looks like something. A building is historic because of what the people that are involved with that building have put into it, what they have committed to it, and the work they have committed to making it a part of Jefferson City for an extended period of time. And I have essentially the same concerns as the other people have expressed it. Quinn Chapel, because it has a yellow brick, or because the doors don't meet a specific size, or because the windows are a specific way, or because this is not right, or that is not right, fails to recognize the fact that by its very existence, Quinn Chapel is a historic building in this community. And I would strongly encourage the council to look at it that way instead of, are the building, is the building old? Does the building look old? Are the windows the right size? Are the doors the right size? Or this, or that, or so forth? And I know Quinn Chapel partially has used some of the elements of the building that it originally was. But it's, my, my real concern is that we're missing the whole point of what is historic about Quinn Chapel and what a historic building can be. Okay? And that's the point I would like to make to this council, is you may have to look at how you're defining historic in the first place. And that's the point I would like to make. If anyone has any questions, I'd be delighted to address them.
Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you very much.
Julie Rungert. I don't think I said that right. Are you E-N-G-T? Is Julie here? Okay. Mr. Chris Graham. He might be here to speak on a different one. He's, I don't think he's here now. And I don't think Rich Callahan is. They might have been here for the other item. Patsy Johnson, I think for the charter. They might have been here for the charter.
Good morning, Mayor and councilpersons. First of all, I want to thank you all for all you've done, working to help with this historic district and having, having the, having the, your people go back and work to provide a venue for, for our, for other properties to be able to be included when a historic district is, is established. Oh, I forgot to say my name. My name's Patsy Johnson. I'm a resident of 908 Lafayette Street. But as our neighborhood area is one block away from this, the proposed historic neighborhood area. And since this avenue is presented to where the, the language in the amendment is presented in the way it's presented, there's a possibility for a change. And I am asking, on behalf of my family, neighborhood friends, and the neighbor in which we live, to have that amendment change. The rule of abutting, to have that language taken out and, you know, or modified to say, to say, I lost my train of thought, I'm sorry, to say, to say, close proximity with shared history, because that's what we have. We have that in that area. And I'm in total support of the amendment, but with that change. And also in, in support of the historic district. The homeowners in the area that we are in, this is my block. I care about it. And, and the people in our area and my neighborhood are totally, are to the most part, are supportive of this, because we stick together and try to support our neighborhood and keep it intact. Because when, when the demolition order went, was proposed, or was, was put in place, and if these homes are picked off and turned into green space, it makes our, it affects the people that live in these homes, that want their homes and they want to be able to do better. And it also makes our entire neighborhood unstable and vulnerable, vulnerable to more picking off. And it's not like these are empty homes. These are homes that people raise their kids in, that they live in, that they care about. They've invested money in it. This area has had, has had a lot of things that have changed, some tearing down and breaking up. But the bottom line is, we want to preserve. We want to revitalize, and we want to do better and work together as a neighborhood. And we're united in, from School Street, you know, the people that live in the homes, the homeowners and property owners, all the way to Roland Street and Lafayette and up in this area, in supporting the stability and preserving of the neighborhood and working together and doing so. So preserving these homes and changing the language to close proximity instead, with shared history brings us all together. It's not like, and it keeps, and it allows the property owners not to, on a block away with the same shared response, with the same shared history, not to have to form a district themselves. So I just appeal to you all to vote, to change the language of the amendment, to allow the people and to vote for the historic district.
Thank you. Any questions? All right. Thank you. And next we have Jocelyn King.
I'm Jocelyn King, 901 Roland Court, here in Jefferson City, Missouri. And it's a pleasure to be here with you again. After what I can just heard from Pepsi, I can just say ditto. I am in firm agreement with changing the wording, such that from abutting to close proximity of shared history. It's just kind of crazy how things worked out. Basically, these neighborhoods are split up by the tennis courts. And I can say, well, the tennis courts are historic in themselves if you want to mention that the Avon Hoard Tennis Courts, the first coach of a Lincoln University team to win all state. But we won't go there. We can find and pick up on a lot of little historic nuggets around this area that with this wording, we can add on. And that's very important. I heard someone say, well, why don't we just make all of Lafayette Street an historic area? I think that's a good idea, too. But I think it, you know, it's just because it started the way it has. We have a way to get things going, and we just can keep building step by step. And the council is open-minded. If some other change, amendment is needed down the way, I'm sure at least we can bring it to you and you can consider it. I also would like to say that I lived at 802 Lafayette when I first moved here in 1970. And most of the people living there then live there now. They're still my neighbors, only I moved two blocks away. But also with all those years and what they've invested in their homes that still look very, very nice, but the homes are old. And the people there, well, there are a few who've reached over age 60. And they would love to live out their lives in their homes. But at this point, with the FEMA regulations, it would be very hard to do quality of life improvements and repairs. And if there is something, lightning strikes or something, that's just unavoidable, they would have to go through the stress and everything of moving, leaving, trying to be resourceful with other resources to get things done, living in uncertainty. And I just feel that even though it's not a guarantee, the only thing that can be there for FEMA to think about allowing a waiver on their restrictions is this historic district status. So I would love to give my neighbors this boost of a chance, okay, so that these restrictions aren't, you know, devastating to them, or they don't know what to do, or what to do next, or how can I do this? How can I do that? And being a neighborhood is all about looking out for each other. And I don't want to see, you know, bringing on this, doing that move, you know, would slight them who have invested so much in the neighborhood for so many years. So that's what my concern is, and I appreciate your kind attention to this. And I hope we do reach a resolution this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Okay. Sheila Logan.
Hi. Madam Mayor, I'm going to sit here because my back is like Sam Converse. Yeah, I think if I can hear me if I'm sitting right here.
Maybe we'll grab the microphone just so that those who might be tuning in who aren't in the room could hear your comments.
Thank you very much. Hi, everybody. First of all, let me say this. I am so excited to be here, involved in city government again. So I'm excited. I was very angry with the city when they took away my ramp, and the man told me I couldn't put another ramp up because I was in a, FEMA wouldn't let me because I was in a flood zone. I said, well, I had a ramp before, so why you won't give me a ramp now? Okay, that's another story. Okay. Okay, fine. Oh, hi. Somebody just reminded him. My name is Sheila. Hi. Sheila Logan Sims, S-Y-M-E-S. My address is 820 Lafayette Street here in Jefferson City, Missouri. Been here, I'm 73 years old, and I thank God for it. Hallelujah. Yes, I do. I am so glad to see that the council is moving quickly on things. Thank you for taking, taking the note, taking, taking the action and getting, getting that change in there on the, on the planning and zoning folk. Okay, thank you very much. Okay. I saw you taking notes over there, child. I saw you the last time. Okay, I saw you. Thank you for including Quinn Chapel, making it, now, listen, let me tell you something. I don't want Quinn Chapel to have to go through all that yada, 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 that historic, that y'all went through the historic thing, because you should have included them in the first place. Okay, okay. They should not have been excluded in the first place. So do they have the wonderful old building? No. They would have a wonderful old building if it had not been moved twice. It had been moved twice. Once from down here by where the central motor bank is, and then it was put over here on Lafayette Street, and it was moved again. Praise God, from whom all blessings flow. It was moved again for different reasons, monetary reasons for either the city or central bank, you know, but it was moved. It ain't their fault. Guess what? That yada, yada, you talked about, about the building and all that stuff and what it looked like, it looked, I could tell you what it looked like as it developed 73 years ago. I could tell you about that. But they have some of the stuff in there. I have to talk fast because y'all got a clock on me. I resent that, but y'all got a clock on me. But the stuff they have inside their church is reflective of their history. It's reflective of their history. You want to know about the history? Step inside the church. Don't talk to me about the building and what the edifice looks like. I don't care. Okay? What I care about is that the history of the church is still there. The building, the purpose of that building is still a church of praising God, from whom all blessings flow. Hallelujah, let them flow. Okay? But y'all get to busy and pass this thing, so, so I sent you, I sent you, hi, how you doing? So, um, so I sent you, I sent you a, hi, how you doing? I sent you an email telling you about the wording and stuff, to help you with the wording and stuff, to make it flow, make it flow. So if you need, did I put my phone number in there? I hope I did. But my phone number is 576-328795. I'll help you with the wording if you want me to. Because, listen, let me tell you something. They've got to, they've got to make it so it includes Quinn Chapel. You've got to make it so that I'm out there right on the creek. So yes, I'm on the creek. Hello. And I'm in the flood plain, but don't hurt me because I'm in the flood plain. Don't keep me from doing stuff because I'm in the flood plain. Fix it. So when they say flood plain people are in trouble, then I'm gonna come to you and look at you, okay? And say, excuse me, I'm the one on the flood plain. I'm right on the creek. Fix me. I was really talking fast. Listen, okay, listen. Thank you very much. You know who I am. I gave you my telephone number. You have any questions? Anybody have any questions on me? I don't think so. Okay. But if you do, call me. Call me at all. I got 16 seconds, so you can't call me here. Okay. I'll talk to you all later, and thank you very much for allowing me this time. And listen, and once again, thank you, city government, for moving on stuff, for getting busy and making things happen.
Thank you. And then the two that haven't signed up, we have Mr. Glover Brown and Cassandra Gould, and then, so...
You know, and sometimes I sit next to her in church. I have a presentation that they're gonna put up. My name is Glover Brown. I'm the executive director of the Friends of Lafayette and the Historic Foot District. I'm here tonight to say that I'm in favor of the amendment, but I have an issue with the amendment. I agree with Councilman Fitzwater in that in previous meetings he had indicated that he felt like we were, that you all were piecemealing a resolution to a problem. One of the things that I looked at and I contemplated was, what is the effect of both the original amendment and what are the original ordinance and what was going to be the, thank you, and what was going to be the effect of the amendment? The original ordinance set up what, in my opinion, the applicants created what I look at as disparate treatment. Quinn Chapel was treated differently than the other people that were in the historic district. Quinn Chapel repeatedly had asked to be part of the historic district. The reason that they were excluded, they were told because their building did not meet the criteria for the design criteria. Now, when you look at disparate treatment, the people who are perpetrating the disparate treatment, they kind of slip up because in the middle of all of that, it was asked of the applicants, did they mind Quinn Chapel being a part of their district? And at the very end, when their feet were being held to the fire, they said, oh, no, we don't mind Quinn Chapel being in the district. So therefore, their original reasoning was a pretext. So I'm wanting to bring that out tonight. Now, um, when you look at the amendment, the amendment says that Quinn Chapel can make application. But there has been news articles, I think it's been said here by city staff, that even once Quinn Chapel makes an application, that there is no guarantee that they're going to be included into the district. In my contemplation of this, I looked at, well, through direction to city staff, they were asked to find a way that they could include Quinn Chapel into the district. In doing so, they came up with this amendment to the ordinance. I've said before, it's like putting the cart before the horse. I agree with Councilman Fitzwater. You're coming up with a solution to something that doesn't even exist yet. So therefore, when you look at this, now we look at the next term, which is a disparate impact, is what the applicants did in the beginning by denying Quinn Chapel access to the historic district in the beginning. Did this create a disparate impact on Quinn Chapel? Well, we're looking at Quinn Chapel now has to make application. And in doing so, there's no, again, there's no guarantee that they're going to be included in the historic district. There was a gentleman at the last meeting that gave testimony that Quinn Chapel has the original steeple. There are pillars from the front part of the church that were included in the new part. And I think your city attorney could probably research this for you, but there was a case in New Jersey, St. Bartholomew approached their city preservation and conservation commission because they had a new building. But they weren't going to be included in their preservation historic district. But then they went back and they pointed out that they have the steeple from the original church. The city went back and kind of relooked at that and rethought that, and I think they had resolved it with a special amendment to their ordinance. I'm, again, in favor of the historic district. But I'm gonna ask that the council, because now we all know that it's on the informal calendar right now, and they can only stay there for a little while or it'll die. So at this point, you're going to get to the point where you're gonna want to recall it off of the informal calendar. And I think the city council, or councillor, has advised you all that once you do that, then you can set it up to where you can vote on it at a later date. There isn't a window, but you have to do it in a reasonable amount of time. Now, I just heard the question asked of the city councillor tonight, how long would it take for Quinn Chapel to make application? He informed you that after they've made the application, it'll take 90 days. So I'm going to ask that the council reject both the original application and the proposed amendment to the ordinance. Now that you've all, you got it all written, all you have to do is put it in place when the time is right. And so all that we have been asking from the beginning is if you're going to do this, because you have a lot of people looking at how you're going to create this first local historic district. And they're gonna be watching you, and you don't want to set a precedent to where they can come back and say, oh, we don't want these people in because of this. And then later go back and say, oh, well, they can make application, but yet the criteria is the same. Now, the wording on the amendment said that once the applicant has done the process, and originally they were excluding Quinn Chapel because of their design criteria, they're saying now that in the application process, Quinn Chapel can also ask that the design criteria be modified. Now, these are a lot of hoops and hurdles that Quinn Chapel is having to go through if it were not for the fact all they had to do was be included in the original application.
Mr. Brown, one moment. What's our time? Just so we get out of respect for everybody who's still waiting to speak. Okay, it is at zero in the...
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, so again, all I'm asking is that tonight, don't throw away the idea of a historic district. Go back to what we've been saying all along. If you're going to do it, do it right the first time in agreement with Councilman Fitzwater. Make sure that all your bases are covered so that when you close one loophole, another one doesn't open. So with that, I'm through. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Ms. Reverend Cassandra Gould.
Thank you, Mayor, city council, and city staff. First, I want to absolutely thank city staff for following the instruction and for city council, listening to the voices of the people, many of whom are not my parishioners, but recognize our longevity and our contribution in this community. I, with that said, I agree that the language could be different in the amendment. My congregation was rather disappointed that in essence, we basically, it's almost like we just start with a new application, because the steps are literally the same to be included in this. And it really is a matter of being intentionally excluded from the beginning. Our name is mentioned in the application. Out of the 29 pages of narrative and approximately 22 and a half pages of Black history, our name certainly is mentioned in there, but then the applicant said they didn't know about us, so we were left out. And so I know that that gets into the School Street thing, but I think that there's opportunity, maybe, to make the amendment more flexible, if possible, and we are certainly willing to do application. When we stood against this historic district, it was because we believed that they were using Black history as a farce. And we really speak, we are, I'm with the rest of the residents on Lafayette. When our church was forced to move, we couldn't move anywhere in the city, and our parishioners were intentional about staying in this community. What happens when lines are drawn and people are left out, it diffuses democracy. And so democracy has been diffused in the foot, on the foot, since the 1962 urban renewal plan. And so there are a lot of people who look like me who've been left out of democracy. And really, lines and districts and communities actually are ways that we mediate democracy. We mediate democracy. That's why you are council people of a particular ward and particular districts and particular precincts, because that's how democracy is mediated in America. And so democracy is diffused when people are displaced. And so our objection is really just about that, and really, in honor of our ancestors who did not have the opportunity to change the fact that they were displaced. And so all I'm asking in this amendment is that it be a little more friendly, because the Lafayette corridor is historic. It is historic from the 900 block at least of Lafayette all the way back to McCarty Street on Lafayette. And so that really is the foot. And so all of this conversation about where we're kind of near the foot and all of that, that is the foot. That's the history of the Black community that I've known since the day that I walked into Jefferson City eight years ago, that my parishioners who shared with me. And so if the amendment could be a little more friendly, or if there's opportunity for an ordinance that allows an application to be amended, because that is actually what would give us the reparations for being left out of the application in the beginning. Thank you.
Thank you. Reverend Gould, what would you like to see changed? So you mentioned at the end about it being more friendly, or you said the other...
So I think Ms. Johnson and others indicated about the language that restricts it to property that abuts the current district. Once you pass Quinn Chapel, you have no property until you get to Second Christian Church. And so what if Second Christian Church, who, not quite as old as us, but they've been here 113 years or so, I think some of them are here, they can tell their own history, but that's the information that I have, what if they want to be in it? What if Lincoln and Quinn Chapel are really the anchor institutions in this community, but they're residents that make up the community? And so I would like to see an opportunity for what's actually the historic foot to actually be a part of this without going through a whole lot of stuff that makes us all start over.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Okay. So I think that covers those who have signed up. So before we close the public hearing portion on this particular bill, is there anyone else who would like to speak? Mrs. Smith, and then...
Good evening, everyone. My name is Jenny Smith. I want to thank the city staff for responding so swiftly to creating this document that will allow for expansion of historic districts in Jeff City. Now, of course, this arose out of our application for the School Street Historic District. But I also would echo what Mrs. Johnson requested, that the wording be changed to, instead of saying properties abutting the historic district, to say adjacent or properties in close proximity with a shared history, because the properties in the 700, 800, 900 block of Lafayette do share history with us, but we are divided by a gulf of green space between us and them. And it would be very appropriate for them to be added to the historic district as well as Quinn Chapel. I would respond to Councilman Fitzwater's remark about piecemealing, and that is that you will be taking this up later, our application for the School Street District. We followed the code. And if that code isn't correct, it should have been changed before all of our effort to comply with it. So I believe that we can, that we have to piecemeal to fix this. And so this is part of fixing that original code. And I would really ask for your support of this amendment to the code, because this would apply to all historic districts, not just ours if it passes. I would also add that adding Quinn Chapel to the historic district or any other properties to the historic district, if ours is approved, it would be much less trouble to add one property or five properties than it would to start from scratch. And I think the city councillor realizes that there's a great deal more effort to writing an application for 27 properties as opposed to one or five. So that's all I would request. And again, thank you for all the effort that you've put into this.
Thank you. Any questions? Well, actually, with the public hearing, that's not how it would work, but you're welcome to ask her privately, though, certainly. Thank you. All right, thank you. And then our next speaker.
Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor, and the city council. I've attended, everyone in this room I probably know and I feel very close to. When I came here in 1979, I really wish I had lived in the historic district in Lafayette Street, but we moved out further and were told we couldn't buy property where we wanted to buy it. But because we offered the amount that the people requested, they had to sell us the property. And it wasn't because we didn't want to live on Lafayette Street or in that neighborhood, it's because we would have lost money coming from St. Louis and living on, purchasing a house that was below what we had sold a house for in St. Louis. And now that's kind of getting into the point, I have been trying to study this issue, and I consider myself halfway intelligent. And I'm so confused about this, because so many emotions are wrapped up into this issue. It's not about redeveloping the foot so we can have resources for the people that are not there, and I commend the people who want to do that here. But this is our neighborhood. They would lose money. And until you put the money up to redevelop the area, then I don't think we should continue to talk about that. Put your money where your mouth is. I'm concerned about the people who live on Lafayette Street and Roland Street and all of that area. They cannot do anything with their property. They're in the flood zone. It's about losing that particular, those homes, and giving them some breath and hope. I used to come from a zoo and go to the foot. Where were the people then and the parents then? Why did we save the foot? But what we did, urban renewal, we have nothing. I'm asking the council, and I hope I have my facts right on this. What's on the table now is to amend to allow for, to allow people to apply in order to be a part of the School Street Historic District. The application process has to be the process. Quinn Chapel needs to be in, but I'm not sure every other piece of property will meet the criteria. So it shouldn't be, we should get together and help write the application. You have people who have done this already. Quinn Chapel should be in. But all the other things that are clouding my mind when I go home tonight trying to figure this out, we're gonna lose an opportunity. We're gonna have another urban renewal because of the flood plain, and all those homes are gonna be gone. And so right now, I am totally confused, other than to say, there's something that was presented... was presented in good faith. Let's move forward. We're trying to get that, the amendment to allow for them to allow other people to come in. And Quinn Chapel, I understand, you may think you're not going to be included, but I would hope this council, this body, would make, find reason to include them. But everybody that makes the application may not be able to be included. We've been excluded for many, many years, but if we don't get together on what this is, we're relying on your influence to make it happen. And we only can rely on you all to make it happen. My time is up. I don't think I'm any more straight on this, but it's a lot of tension and confusion, and we're going to miss a great opportunity to have the School Street District and to include other properties in it. And I hope you all are looking at this to say, this is community engagement, we really want to make something right for Jefferson City and the African-American families that live here, and the people who have property down there on School Street. And yes, I would be living down there if we just said, we just can't go out and live out on primrose where we got able to buy a house, but we had to go the legal routes to do that. But I'm saying that it's a different time now. It's a different time. And if we're going to have historic districts, we have a good opportunity to have it. And I will apologize, and I will offend it. It's time for us to come together and make sure we save that particular area. And so I hope you all do your due diligence and not get strayed. And it's not piecemeal. Black folks have always dealt with, it's been the product of piecemealing. This is an opportunity, I think, that the city can stand, but it cannot be that you don't go through the application process. If you don't get through the application process and you fail to beat the criteria, you're just not in. You just, but Quinn Chapel is a different, 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 and I used to go to Quinn Chapel. And so I just want to say to you, I don't know what I've said other than, please kind of get through all of it and pass the, allow to amend, and I think neighboring communities or, but like Passy, in close proximity makes very good sense. So thank you very much, and I hope you all do your due diligence.
Thank you, Mrs. Johnson. And the direction from council was to find a way to amend to include Quinn. Just, Coleman? Coleman, what did I just say?
Johnson.
I'm so sorry. Jackie Coleman, I know Jackie Coleman. Mrs. Coleman, I meant to say. That the intention, that the intention by council, the direction at least, was, at past meetings, was to include Quinn, find a way to include them. So that's the direction we're all, that we're all going. So I just wanted to make sure that's clarified. All right. Any last speakers? Okay.
My name is Ann Quinette McDonald. I go to Second Christian, disciple of Christ. I do community missionary work. And just listening to everything that everyone has said, you know, I ditto what Passy was saying that needs to be changed, but I also, you know, my heart aches because you all are trying to do the right thing, and y'all getting right on it, you know? And I believe in my heart that you all are here to do the right thing, you know? And I appreciate it, you know? Second Christian Church is right. I mean, we had a lot of things, but if y'all do it the way that y'all say y'all going to do it and make the change that Passy was talking about, I believe that Quinn Chapel will have an opportunity. I don't believe that y'all would hurry up and try to make a change to not include them, you know? And I just want you all to know that, hey, I appreciate, you know? I'm not going to use big words, because I'm not that type of person. I grew up, I'm 57 years old. I lived on Lafayette Street. I don't want to see no stores. I want to be able to see what memory we have left of the houses. My grandmother used to live in the alley. My aunt used to live right on Lafayette Street. And historical, it doesn't mean because you want to build a building or get something. It's not about that. It's about what we have left, you know? So what you might think is historical, to put money in your pocket, that's one thing. And I'm not trying to disrespect anyone, but I don't want anyone to sit and say that Lafayette Street is not historical, because it is. You know? And to see you all, you know, do the work that y'all are doing so that this thing possibly can happen, I feel like we should not sit and try to tear you all down and just already say, hey, we're going to deny them. Okay, let's just hurry up and do this. You all don't seem to be that type, you know? Because of the way that you all have worked to make this happen, you know? So I don't feel like you all should be, I feel like you all have been attacked. That's just my opinion, and we all have one, you know? But job well done, you know? And if we can sit and make that one thing possible so that maybe my church can come in, you know? It's a family thing. You can't take what memory that we have left, you know? I grew up in that area, you know? So I ask, and I want to just say, thank you, because I feel that each and every one of you all will do the right thing. So thank you.
Thank you. All right. Any last speakers? Okay, at this point, we'll have Mr. Rysik, and then we'll close the public, the public hearing portion.
Madam Mayor, city council attendees, I personally would not want to be in an historic district, but I consider it more of a liability than an asset, but other people think differently than I do. A lot of work has gone into putting this application together. My suggestion to you, therefore, is with Bill Number 2018-044, the expansion of the district, either you postpone it or modify it to include some of the suggestions this evening, and Bill Number 2018-21 that you approve it. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. At this point, we'll close the public hearing portion and take up Bill 2018-44.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, amending Chapter 8 Buildings and Building Regulations pertaining to expansion of established local historic districts.
Okay. Council comments and deliberation? Councilman Hensley.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, to propose an amendment and speak on it briefly.
Yes.
Thank you. I've provided this in paper form to Ms. Donaldson, and I've also shared the contents with the council prior to the meeting. And, let's see, I have to share some comments on it, or just go right into what it would do? Maybe I'll just go into what it would do. It would be to remove the sentence within 2018-044 that states such parcels shall be directly abutting the established local historic district, and to replace those words with such additional parcels shall be within reasonable proximity to and share historical features in common with the established local historic district. And that would, that's the end of my proposed language. I think this is really a smaller tweak than it may seem, but I think it would go a long way to avoid unnecessary and sort of absurd unfairness in some results. Once the district is established, if we follow the method as currently drafted, one uninterested neighbor could cut off a whole host of neighbors down the line that might otherwise be interested. And that would be, you know, I think unfair and unwise, would also lead to inefficiency, because those folks would probably still be committed to pursuing that distinction, and they'd have to start all over with a brand-new district. So you have neighboring districts with potentially nearly identical histories, but they are separate and distinct from each other because of this phrasing. I certainly understand staff's interest in maintaining compact districts. I think that makes sense. However, I really do believe that the reasonable proximity plus shared history pieces in here will sort of naturally lead to appropriately compact districts. Anything else I want to say? Yeah, so, you know, a more user-friendly approach, a more flexible approach was mentioned by several speakers tonight, and I certainly agree with them in that. I've had some question about what reasonable would mean. And I'll admit right up front, and to sort of borrow a phrase, this may be the worst phrase that we could use, except for every other phrase that we could use. It would be, I think requiring contiguity is unworkable for a number of reasons. I think requiring, setting a limit of so many feet, or so many miles, or so many blocks could easily lead to sort of exactly the same sort of unfair result. I think reasonable proximity will depend on the specifics with respect to the location and the history of the established district and of the applying parcels. And I think that will actually work out in a more natural way than some might fear up front. So it'll be, you know, it would be case-specific, but I think it would certainly be more workable than what we're, what we currently have. So I, again, would make the motion at this time that we adopt this change.
So we have a motion to amend?
I'll second this. Second?
Any further discussion on the amendment? And Mrs. Donaldson, do you have that amendment clearly?
I have it in writing.
Okay. Councilman Fitzwater?
I just had a question then for our legal counsel. Is the term reasonable proximity or shared history a defensible term? Because we're going to get into a situation where someone is going to ask us, that's, is it two blocks, 10 blocks, 22 blocks?
When you use words like reasonable, it's entirely context-specific. So it is, as Councilman Hensley indicated, it would be on a case-by-case basis, and could only be analyzed on a case-by-case basis. So yes, reasonable is defensible if that particular case was in fact reasonable. It's circular, but that's kind of how it would work out. And anyone that would challenge it, and any courts that would examine it, would have to look at it on a case-by-case basis and make a determination, well, was that addition reasonable?
Further questions or deliberation on the amendment to the bill? Okay. Roll call, please, on the amendment.
Hussey?
Aye.
Kimna?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Wiseman?
Aye.
Fitzwater?
No.
Graham?
Aye.
Hensley?
Aye.
Okay. So the amendment passes, so now council can have further deliberation. There is a checkmark by there. If council wants to take that up to suspend, we would need a motion to suspend the rules. But at this point, we're still deliberating the bill. Any further deliberation, or any desire to suspend the rules, or questions, comments of council? Councilwoman Wiseman?
Yes. Thank you. Just to be clear about, for instance, a building like Quinn Chapel, because the facade is so new, if the Historic Preservation Commission, or the Planning and Zoning Commission says, no, this doesn't fit within the historic district, we still are the final decider, correct? They can still come to us and go through all of those, and they can say, the city council still gets to make that final decision, right?
City council's the final decision-maker on that.
Okay. Thank you. Further questions? Councilman Mahalovich, and then Prather?
I was wondering if city staff had any comments with regard to some of the comments made about too many barriers, or we don't want to start all over, but is there any way to shorten the process? And I think, I understand that you're doing this not for this case, but any cases in the future as well. So I wondered if you had any comment with regard to any of the testimony you heard with regard to why it is constructed the way it is?
If I may, I believe Mr. Moulman pointed out that it has to go through the planning and zoning process, so that would be required, so that is a large bulk of that. And I'm sure the Historic Preservation Commission would want to have a recommendation to make to the council also. So it's working within that planning and zoning framework. We have to advertise that. It takes some time. We have to post it. And certainly, the Planning and Zoning Commission, I think, can carry it over to a meeting. So there's, you know, that 90 days is a, you know, sort of, I don't want to say worst-case scenario, it can always get worse, but is a good estimate of how long it would take to go through the process.
If I may, I'm going to add on to Sunny. A historic determination that does not go through the HPC Commission would draw an unwanted amount of criticism and any potential challenge. You need that determination, at least for them to hear it and make a recommendation to, you know, for example, if someone wanted to take advantage of the 50% rule in the floodway, and FEMA ever did an audit, and they noticed that this was declared historical, but never went to the HPC, to a Historical Preservation Committee, I wouldn't want to have to defend that. So I think, not only being good policy to send it through the HPC, it's also highly recommended from a defensibility standpoint, if we were ever to get challenged or audited by FEMA. And then, like I've stated with the P and Z, I just think it's a demand of state law that these development-type applications go through the P and Z process as well.
And I think that deserves, oh, I think that deserves mention, because we have a, city government is slow, it's a deliberate process for a reason, because we need all this input. We need the Historic Preservation Commission, who knows history and can rule on what they're to rule on, and then our planning and zoning is based on ward representation, and they look at it slightly different, and then it comes to us. I think the whole process is a deliberate, slow for a reason, and the high bar we're setting for historic districts is reasonable, based on what kind of changes we're making here. But I do appreciate it, although I don't like it all the time, having to go through the bureaucracy.
Councilman Prather?
Was there a particular reason we were needing to suspend the rules tonight? I can't remember what we had talked about.
I think just timeliness.
Yeah. I think there was, I think there was a desire to address the situation quickly and not delay unnecessarily. Maybe the School Street application is, this has been hanging around for a while, and it'd be nice to get some action on it. But I don't, there's no particular impending deadline that would demand it.
Okay.
Any further deliberation? And so a request to suspend the rules, though, would that be beneficial to Quinn Chapel, to let them start this process to be included in the district faster?
I think that approving this would allow them to justify expending time and resources on, you know, pursuing that. So, you know, the sooner you get started, the sooner you can get it done.
So based on that, it would be probably beneficial to have a request to suspend the rules to allow them to begin that process?
I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules.
Second?
Any further discussion to suspend the rules? All in favor, say aye. Or I'm sorry, are there any objections? Thank you. Seeing none, we will take up 2018-44.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, amending Chapter 8 Buildings and Building Regulations pertaining to expansion of established local historic districts.
Any further deliberation? Roll call, please.
Kimna?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Wiseman?
Aye.
Fitzwater?
No.
Graham?
Aye.
Hensley?
Aye.
Hussey?
Now, before we move on to items six and seven, I know we wanted, we would like to move up, because right now, the informal calendar is almost the last thing on the agenda, but we also have, and I think this might have just been, I don't think this was the intention, but we have item 7A and B. So could we take up, and I don't know if we need to amend the agenda, if council would be agreeable, to take up 7A and B, and then go ahead and have the next item, which is
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. So we will take up now, presentations from staff, consultants, invited guests. We have two this evening. Our Cemetery Resources Board Annual Report, they have been waiting very, very, extremely patiently in the back, and we appreciate them, and all the work that our volunteers do on our city boards and commissions. So we have Mrs. Rebecca Gordon, and Nancy Thompson, and David Grilner.
You won't sit there. Hurry.
All right. Welcome, and thank you for being here this evening.
You have a very full agenda. We're going to try to be as quick as possible with this.
Thank you.
This is the annual report for the Cemetery Resources Board. The members are listed here, and Mark Schreiber is our council liaison. Tim Theroth will become our new president, beginning with the next meeting. The Cemetery Resources Board is, was created in 2011, and it currently oversees Old City Cemetery, Woodland Cemetery, and Longview Cemetery. We are to assure the proper operation and maintenance of the cemeteries. We review maintenance contracts and identify resources to better the quality of these cemeteries. Our goals are to preserve and enhance Jefferson City history, improve the cemetery landscaping, restore damaged gravestones and monuments, improve the record-keeping, improve safety for visitors, and we've also been trying to make this more accessible by visitors, so that they can study the history that's there in a logical manner. And we also want to honor the Jefferson City founding families. This is an example of some of the restoration we have done this past year. The picture on the left shows the cap for that monument off, and it was actually down at the bottom of the hill, close to Miller Street, and we had it moved to the top of the hill. Whoop, you missed one. The Herrick Family Vault? There we go. This is the Herrick Family Vault that we had repaired this year. We received $5,000 from the historic city of Jefferson to finance this. It's a rather unusual vault for this area, it being that it's all brick. Charlotte Herrick was buried there in 1897, and then her mother was buried later, and her father-in-law and her adopted sister-in-law were moved from elsewhere in the cemetery when McCarty Street was widened. This was a project that we undertook with money that was given to us by the Thomas Lawson Prize Society. They gave us $2,000. We spent a little over $1,500 on this restoration. We didn't know who Sarah Walker was when we started, but we chose this because it was pretty representative of the other stones that we have that are similar to this. Turned out that we had Marilyn Gross do a little research on Sarah Walker, and she was the niece of President Andrew Jackson. Her husband was John Walker, who was the fourth treasurer for the state of Missouri, and they lived in a dog trot log house where the Bishop Funeral Home now stands. He was reported to have taken all of Missouri's treasury in one steel box, and he took it home with him at night. This was a particularly rewarding event that we hosted. It's the EER class from the public school system. They take gifted students from the public and parochial schools around the city, and they're in a special accelerated program. Their focus this year was on the relationship of people that were historic to Jefferson City, and the existing buildings that were there. We hosted 90 students over five days, two teachers, two principals, two parents, and one service dog. And it's always fun to have students out there, because they are so anxious to learn. We had our historic walking tour again this year. The weather wasn't very cooperative. We had about 150 people that came through, in spite of the weather and competing events. We also focused on tying the historic people that were there in that cemetery to buildings around the city. We involved people from the community to help with the presentations, and we chose people that had a personal interest or personal knowledge. This is Steve Vile here, representing the Young family. He owns their home on Capitol Avenue. And we had Marilyn Gross, did we miss her? Oh, Marilyn Gross was also, she represented Sarah Walker because she did the research on that particular. We have been investigating the possibility of QR codes as a way to allow the public to know more about the graves that are there, and the people, the history behind the people. We put up some QR codes on temporary markers for this walking tour. And while they were helpful, when we started looking closer, we were concerned that something of a permanent nature might deface the historic value of the property, so we have abandoned that project. We're not going to go forward with that. One big star for us this year was the National Register application. We succeeded in getting this cemetery on the National Register of Historic Places. That lists it at the state level, as well as the federal level. We're hopeful that this prestigious award will aid us in fundraising to do more of the repairs that need to be done out there. We continue to do beautification of the cemetery grounds. We've been successful in the west end of the cemetery. Fortunately, it's the part you see when you come up McCarty Street. The flowers are growing well there. They're not doing as well in other parts of the cemetery. We're going to be planting bulbs out there this fall, and putting some perennials in in the spring. For Longview Cemetery, we continue to oversee maintenance and record-keeping there. We've had a number of cemeteries over the years that were located in and around Jefferson City, small cemeteries that got moved into Longview, and we had no record at the city of these burials. So we've been doing some documenting of these relocated cemeteries. We continue to repair unstable gravestones, and we are hoping to do some repair on some of the retaining walls this next year, in order to retain the historical integrity of the cemetery. We will continue to improve the grounds. We have ordered some additional signage to go in the cemetery, to aid the public in making tours through there. We're having one large sign that explains the historic nature of the cemetery. And then four smaller signs, one to identify the state lot where the early legislators are buried, another for the Clark Mausoleum, because it is such an important part of this cemetery, it's unusual. Joseph Clark was the one who gave Bragg Hall to the city of Jefferson for use as their city hall. Judge William Scott is buried at the back of the cemetery, Woodland Cemetery, has a tall obelisk, and we're going to place a sign there to inform the public more about him. He was a Supreme Court Justice for the state of Missouri, and wrote the majority opinion on the Dred Scott versus Sanford case, which was later appealed to the federal Supreme Court, and was one of the precipitating factors in the Civil War. The fourth sign we're making is to identify the United States Colored Troops that are buried in the west end of the cemetery. We have placed an application for 12 tombstones to identify Civil War veterans that are in unmarked graves there. Seven of them are members of the 62nd U.S. Colored Troops, which was a group that was instrumental in the founding of Lincoln University. They gave their mustering out pay to the founding of Lincoln University, and we believe that these graves need to be marked and memorialized. We were successful in getting four of the tombstones from the federal government. We're working on the others, but have hit some snags, because they die before death certificates, and we cannot prove the disposition of remains through the documentation we have available. So we may have to launch a fundraising project of some sort to help pay for these. They are pretty important to the history of the city, and to the history of Jefferson City. Excuse me. As I mentioned, we have 25 additional bedstones similar to Sarah Walker's. This is how most of them look. The mowers have been driving over them for many, many years, and they're pretty much crumbled up. We have enough money left from the Thomas Lawson Prize donation, and from the walking tour, and we also received some private donations. We're still a little bit short, but we want to do Daniel Cogan's next. He was one of the original citizens of Jefferson City. He owned the first store in Jefferson City, and it was located on the grounds where the Capitol Building now stands. This is another example of the types of tombstones that we're going to have to be resetting. This is quite large and quite heavy. When they're allowed to lay with the, exposed to the elements like that, the engraving eventually fades away, and you can't read it anymore. And this is an example of the retaining walls that surround some of the family plots. It shouldn't be too difficult getting materials, for those walls that have fallen, the stone has been thrown to the back of the cemetery, and is down there in the trees. But, again, to retain the historic integrity of these cemeteries, it's important that we get these things fixed. I was trying to be fast. Were there any questions?
Thank you, Mrs. Thompson, and the commission for the amazing work that you do. You're such a hard-working group and commission. It's amazing what you accomplish every year, and our community is very fortunate to have your dedication to preservation in our community. And we appreciate Councilman Schreiber for your assistance.
I want to thank members of the commission, and Dave Grilner. You all have done a fantastic job with very scarce resources. And as we know, the Old City Cemetery is the oldest public burial ground within the city limits of the city of Jefferson.
And possibly in Cole County.
And it's a virtual who's who of early citizens from Jefferson City, including the state lot with two governors buried up there. So I would challenge the council that if you have not been up there, to the National Cemetery, Woodland, and then the Old City Cemetery, you need to go sometime, because it is truly a classroom in and of itself. So, thank you all so much. I appreciate everything that you do. It's been a pleasure working with you.
It's been a pleasure working with you. Thank you.
Yes, great work, and I know it's been a long night, but let's have you three come up, along with Schreiber, and we'll do a fast picture, and if council would come up here, and maybe we could link your presentation to that, and get some awareness in the community for all that you're doing. If you can stand up.
Hensley's youngest.
Oh, okay.
I just called him out as the youngest. Parkland doesn't play.
Then we have item B, Riverfront Access Update, and then we'll do a quick break after this for everybody. So, I'd like to welcome Mr. Bob Gilbert.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you for your patience this evening.
Now, I know I'm standing between you and a break, so I'll make this pretty quick. I know you've had a long evening. This hopefully will maybe be on the lighter side. It was really just an update. We're not asking for anything from the council, but wanted to update you. We gave an update to the Parks and Rec Commission last Thursday, also on the progress with the project. We do have some PowerPoint slides and a video to share with you tonight, just to give you a little bit of a snapshot into the project. It's been going on for a while, and most of you probably know a lot about it. Some recent news is the land conveyance on the Capitol Complex ground has occurred, and is officially in the hands of the city of Jefferson now. So the beginning of the trail, which we'll talk about a little bit tonight, is now city property. And, again, bit by bit, we're making progress on the project with a lot of great volunteers. By the way, I'm going to mention, Jim Crabtree's also in the audience with me in spirit, and can answer all the questions after I leave. No, but he is there to help, and has been assisting. You may notice the logo on the left, the bicentennial bridge to the island. It is something that's new, since you've probably seen the project in quite some time. Couple reasons for that. One is, we want to set ourselves a deadline, and that's 2021, that's the 200th anniversary of the state becoming a state. This project, again, is not a state project, but it is on Capitol grounds, and has a certain attachment to that, and so we believe that it brands the project well with the bicentennial, and will help us in fundraising efforts as well. So, let's just jump right into it. I've got a few slides to share, some of the images from the video. You can kind of see the renderings there. If I can, do I need to wave someone? Thank you. So, the center picture, I like to show this in most presentations, because people, a lot of people in the community just don't realize what the island is. It is very invisible in our community. It's very hard to find a view of the entire island, and this is a nice perspective view of that 30 acres of green space you see there. It's all forested, essentially forest and wetlands along the river, and separated, of course, by the railroad. On the right is, in blue, are the two kind of major focus points of our community. The state Capitol is the blue box on the top, the blue box, or the blue shape on the bottom is the MSP site. And, again, 30 acres, about a mile in length between the two, and kind of anchored by two pretty major tourism developments for our community. So we think that's a great advantage for a park setting. So, keep going, please, next slide. This is a picture taken from the island side of the railroad, just looking back on the community, just to show there are new views of this that I think our community has not experienced, unless maybe you've been on a barge trip. Next slide. Trying to go fast. This is not a new slide. Most of you who've been on the council a while know about this, but just to show you again, a reference point as to where this is, the circular thing on the aerial there is the Senate Garage, and to the left of that is the Veterans Memorial on the Capitol grounds, and the red is essentially the bridge to the island. Next, if you see the green arrow, I'm going to reference that in a couple of photos here, and then the blue arrow is next slide, or next click. That's another kind of reference point in a future slide here. Go ahead, next slide. Another perspective view. I'll talk a little bit about flooding data here in a minute, but this photo actually was taken during a flood, so that we can look at, again, the Wears Creek Bridge over the railroad, almost inundated by water, but again, the forest, primary part of the island above that water. The next, yeah, that's where it begins, with the green arrow, and it ends. The project, the bicentennial bridge, basically lands on the highest part of the island. Next slide. So if you're going on a quick walk with me, we're going to start at the Lewis and Clark Memorial, and y'all know where that is, kind of right south, or, sorry, north, northeast of MODI headquarters. And then the next slide is kind of right behind those statues, and we're walking along that kind of brownish sidewalk, and then we're going to take a right, and then it ends up right here. At the beginning of where the trail will start, the flagpole on the left is the Veterans Memorial, and the, that same green arrow point I was talking about earlier is right there. Next slide. Just a rendering of kind of how that trail would start, right by the Senate Garage. Next slide. This one's kind of a dark photo, but this is the point right between the Senate Garage and the Veterans Memorial, where we go. Another slide there is showing some concepts of memorials that we can incorporate into that as well. And then, I'm going to take you more, the rest of this is going to be on a video tour, okay? So we kind of started right where it was about ready to take off. So this is a video, and I think it does have some sound, just some music, though. It's not me narrating or anything. All right, the audio is not working great. Okay. Something maybe new, since the last time you've seen this, is those railcar replicas there. Those are over the Middle Pacific Railroad right of way. One of the requirements of the permit we have received from the railroad is to cover the trail, obviously for safety reasons over their assets, and so, instead of just putting a fence over the top, we are looking at this concept, which is for railcars that basically serve as galleries for people to experience history as they go across this bicentennial bridge. Now, as we think about the bicentennial, 200 years that the state has been in existence, obviously the river, the railroad, roadways, and even the airport, which can be seen from this side of the river, really are part of the history of how Jefferson City even came to be. So, these walls are blank in this video, but those would be filled with interpretive panels that would be developed, along with our potential donors that we're talking to about this. And then there are some overlooks, and this, as you see, is a little And then there are some overlooks and this, as you see, is a little shade spot, another area where we can place interpretive panels and information for people to experience the history. Soon, we're going to land here on the ground and also, a lot of things still to develop on the ground itself. This is where we met with the Parks Commission last week and they can work to brainstorm what they'd like to have on the island. We do want to make sure everybody realizes it's considered to be a passive recreational opportunity, so this is natural. We're not talking about any kind of development down there, but passive trails, fishing, just observing nature, being kind of on that ground. Some of these, the rest of the video really is the same kind of stuff, but showing some night views. We do have street lamps, or what's it called, trail lamps at this point, on the island as well, on the bridge. And the video's a little bit dark here with all the lights on in the room, but you can kind of get the concept there that I've been working with your public safety departments who want to make sure as we get to designing all this that it's up to snuff with their comments and remarks we've been talking to them, but it's been quite a while. So, we're going to kind of wrap up here. This thing is going to keep going. Yeah, there you go. Thank you. We'll go ahead and hit the next slide to keep this moving along. I know you guys have a lot on your agenda here. I do have a quick update there. On the next slide is actually flood information. This is frequently a question that we get from the committee, from the public, as we present and talk around the community. We'll get there here in a minute. Okay. I want to point out that a lot of people kind of think this floods very often. This does not flood in a flash flood kind of setting. So, this is on the Missouri River. It takes a continental kind of event for the Missouri River to flood. So, I want to make sure everybody realizes that. This photo is an aerial with the blue representing the flood, which I think of as kind of the one of most recent history of record, December 29th, 2015. You may not remember that exact day. I happened to because I was in Herman, Missouri with my wife on an anniversary trip and we were stuck because all roads in and out of Herman were closed. And this event, December 29th, 2015, the Mississippi and the Missouri were so full that all interstates in and out of St. Louis, Missouri were closed. So, it takes a pretty major event to even get up on the island's surface because of its undulation. But if you look the next slide or hit the next button, that yellow area is 13 acres of the 30 were dry even in that event. And the bridge that we have laid out lands on that point. A lot of the data here has been reported in the News Tribune already, so I'm not going to maybe go through all of that, but basically, we looked at the records. We looked at it last 18 years, five times, 22 total days of water. And as you might imagine, if you look at a lot of your other city parks or especially any state parks, which are among natural resources, you're going to see more frequent flooding than this. So, it's a comment people make, so we wanted to bring that up. And I think that might be it. I'm going pretty quick. Oh, a real quick update. A lot of the images there are fairly small, but again, as the bicentennial bridge and the theme has developed, our committee is working hard now on kind of the final stages of fundraising. So, we are meeting with individuals, companies, groups to discuss fundraising opportunities on the project. And again, not asking anything of the council, but want you to be aware because we are talking to folks in the community and excited about the progress that's been made and especially about kind of how this project has developed over time into something that we believe is going to be a real asset for our community and for tourism here. And I'm happy to answer any questions you have or Jim can certainly help as well, but I'm going to stop there.
Thank you both for being here and giving us this latest update. I could not be more excited about the progress that's being made on this project and seeing the concept is just really incredible, especially the video when you go through the train cars on the bridge is just really breathtaking and exciting concept. So, does council have any questions this evening? All right, thank you. And we'll look forward to working together and learning more as it continues to progress and look forward to the fundraising, so.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Gilbert. With that, we will take a five-minute break and come back here in five minutes. Okay, thank you. Let's go. Did anyone order pizza?
I'm excited to. James Holm, right? Yeah. How do you follow him?
Oh, he's doing good. Yeah. He's one of the best. I mean, I love him. I hear about him. He's a good guy. I see him. Oh, Jeanette. Uh-huh. He's not done until he's got cancer and busy and hard times. The Warriors. They both were never worth it. He's over. He's working. So, she can walk over and see him. Okay. I'll tell you what you have. I think he will remember that. I'll go there. I'm watching. He's a fisherman. He's a proud one. All right. I'll tell you. I'll tell you what you have. I think he will remember that. I'll go there. I'm watching. He's a fisherman. He's a proud one. All right. I'll tell you. I'll tell you what you have. I think he will remember that. I'll go there. I'm watching. He's a fisherman. He's a proud one. All right. I'll tell you. I'll tell you what you have. I think he will remember that. I'll go there. I'm watching. He's a fisherman. He's a proud one. All right. I'll tell you. I'll tell you what you have. I think he will remember that. I'll go there. I'm watching. He's a fisherman. He's a proud one. All right. I'll tell you. I'll tell you what you have. I think he will remember that. I'll go there. I'm watching. He's a fisherman. He's a proud one. All right. I'll tell you. I'll tell you what you have. I think he will remember that. I'll go there. I'm watching. He's a fisherman. He's a proud one. All right. I'll tell you. I'll tell you what you have. I think he will remember that. I'll go there. I'm watching. He's a fisherman. He's a proud one. All right. I'll tell you. I'll tell you what you have. I think he will remember that. I'll go there. I'm watching. He's a fisherman. He's a proud one. All right. I'll tell you. I'll tell you what you have. I think he will remember that. I'll go there. I'm watching. He's a fisherman. He's a proud one. All right. I'll tell you. I'll tell you what you have. I think he will remember that. I'll go there. I'm watching. He's a fisherman. He's a proud one. All right. I'll tell you. I'll tell you what you have. I think he will remember that. I'll go there. I'm watching. He's a fisherman. He's a proud one. All right. I'll tell you. I'll tell you what you have. I think he will remember that. I'll go there. I'm watching. He's a fisherman. He's a proud one. All right. I'll tell you. I'll tell you what you have. I think he will remember that. I'll go there. I'm watching. He's a fisherman. He's a proud one. All right. I'll tell you. I'll tell you what you have. I think he will remember that. I'll go there. I'm watching. He's a fisherman. He's a proud one. All right. I'll tell you. I'll tell you what you have. I think he will remember that. I'll go there. I'm watching. He's a fisherman. He's a proud one. All right. I'll tell you. I'll tell you what you have. I think he will remember that. I'll go there. I'm watching. He's a fisherman. He's a proud one. All right. I'll tell you. I'll tell you what you have. I think he will remember that. I'll go there. I'm watching. He's a fisherman. He's a proud one. All right. I'll tell you. I'll tell you what you have. I think he will remember that. I'll go there. I'm watching. He's a fisherman. He's a proud one. All right. I'll tell you. I'll tell you what you have. I think he will remember that. I'll go there. I'm watching. He's a fisherman. He's a proud one. All right. I'll tell you. I'll tell you what you have. I think he will remember that. I'll go there. I'm watching. He's a fisherman. He's a proud one. All right. I'll tell you. I'll tell you what you have. I think he will remember that. I'll go there. I'm watching. He's a fisherman. He's a proud one. All right. I'll tell you. I'll tell you what you have. I think he will remember that. I'll go there. I'm watching. He's a fisherman. He's a proud one. All right. I'll tell you. I'll tell you what you have. I think he will remember that. I'll go there. I'm watching. He's a fisherman. He's a proud one. All right. I'll tell you. I'll tell you what you have. I think he will remember that. I'll go there. I'm watching. He's a fisherman. He's a proud one. All right. I'll tell you. I'll tell you what you have. I think he will remember that. I'll go there. I'm watching. He's a fisherman. He's a proud one. All right. I'll tell you. I'll tell you what you have. I think he will remember that. I'll go there. I'm watching. He's a fisherman. He's a proud one. All right. I'll tell you. I'll tell you what you have. I think he will remember that. I'll go there. I'm watching. He's a fisherman. He's a proud one. All right. I'll tell you. I'll tell you what you have. I think he will remember that. I'll go there. I'm watching. He's a fisherman. He's a proud one. All right. I'll tell you. I'll tell you what you have. I think he will remember that. I'll go there. I'm watching. He's a fisherman. He's a proud one. All right. I'll tell you. I'll tell you what you have. I think he will remember that. I'll go there. I'm watching. He's a fisherman. He's a proud one. All right. I'll tell you. I'll tell you what you have. I think he will remember that. I'll go there. I'm watching. He's a fisherman. He's a proud one. All right. I'll tell you. I'll tell you what you have. I think he will remember that. I'll go there. I'm watching. He's a fisherman. He's a proud one. All right. I'll tell you. I'll tell you what you have. I think he will remember that. I'll go there. I'm watching. He's a fisherman. He's a proud one. All right. I'll tell you. I'll tell you what you have. I think he will remember that. I'll go there. I'm watching. He's a fisherman. He's a proud one. All right. I'll tell you. I'll tell you what you have. I think he will remember that. I'll go there. I'm watching. He's a fisherman. He's a proud one. All right. I'll tell you. I'll tell you what you have. I think he will remember that. I'll go there. I'm watching. He's a fisherman. He's a proud one. All right. I'll tell you. I'll tell you what you have. I think he will remember that. I'll go there. I'm watching. He's a fisherman. He's a proud one. All right. I'll tell you. I'll tell you what you have. I think he will remember that. I'll go there. I'm watching. He's a fisherman. He's a proud one. All right. I'll tell you. I'll tell you what you have. I think he will remember that. I'll go there. I'm watching. He's a fisherman. He's a proud one. All right. I'll tell you. I'll tell you what you have. I think he will remember that. I'll go there. I'm watching. He's a fisherman. He's a proud one. All right. I'll tell you. I'll tell you what you have. I think he will remember that. I'll go there. I'm watching. He's a fisherman. He's a proud one. All right. I'll tell you. I'll tell you what you have. I think he will remember that. I'll go there. I'm watching. He's a fisherman. He's a proud one. All right. I'll tell you. I'll tell you what you have.
It's, it's a total of four, we're at the third right now.
Uh, no, um, well, yeah, including when, when you put it on, it would expire if nothing happened at the very next, at the, at the, at the next meeting, the September fourth meeting, it would not appear on the second meeting in September. So, there'd be one more meeting after this one where it could be pulled off.
Okay. At this time, I would like to, like for it to remain on the informal.
Have it remain, okay. Would that, how would that impacted all the progress on adding Quinn Chapel? It wouldn't put any delay on that, okay, all right. So, that will remain on the informal. Okay, so, in, there's some bills introduced, some bills pending here, or a couple other things here before we get to our, where are we at? So, we can have item ten, presentations, announcements. Do we want to go through that, all that, or should we try to accommodate the people who are still here on other bills, or just run through the, keep going through the agenda? Okay, we're gonna keep going. Item six, we have no appointments. Okay, so, basically, uh, we're gonna go ahead and we're starting now with the agenda with item six, and we'll go through the remainder of the agenda. When we get to item fourteen, the, which is the school street item, that will remain on the informal calendar. So, Councilwoman Ward will leave that on for, for the next meeting to be taken up at that time. So, no action tonight. Okay. All right, so, item six, there's no appointments. Item seven, presentations, we've already had. Item eight, announcements by the Mayor, Council, and staff. And I'll, I'll start with my announcements. I have, uh, the, the City of Jefferson won an award from E S G R., which is the employer support of the National Guard and Reserve. So, last Friday evening, they had a banquet, and we won the Seven Seals Award for our support, as employer support of those in the Guard. And it's an honor for us to receive this on behalf of the city, and we appreciate all of our employees that serve our country, and that we can help them and assist them, and to, to win this award was really wonderful, and we will hang this here in City Hall. But, wanted to take this opportunity to thank those who serve, and many get deployed for various things, and we are proud that we can show that support to, to those who work for the city and also serve our country. And, um, one other thing, today, the First Lady, Governor Parsons' wife, Teresa Parsons, and I, along with Claudia Kehoe, Lieutenant Governor Kehoe's wife, welcomed students to Special Learning Center, and it was a great way to kick off the school year, seeing all the little students come in. And one thing she said, Teresa Parsons said, "Well, I'm not here as the First Lady, I'm here as a Nana." And she really was, and she was like having a Nana right there with all these kids, and was so great with them. And then it was so cute, 'cause one little girl said, "My Nana's a Nana too," and it was just the cutest thing. So, she really connected with the kids, but I, I just say that because, for one, it was great to have her connecting with our community. We appreciate Special Learning Center for what they do. It was great to see the students come back, and they were very excited to be back. And to everybody who's going back to school, we appreciate all that are in education in our community, and we remind everyone to be safe within the school zones, and, and to be aware as everybody's going back to school. Other council announcements, any committee meetings or council announcements this evening? Councilman Prather.
We have our budget meeting this Thursday, five-thirty, in these chambers.
Great, we will be there.
Hopefully, the last one this year.
Last one, okay. Councilman Mahalovich.
Our P and Z meeting that same night? Oh, it's, it's, I have the wrong week, okay.
All right. Any other announcements by council? Okay. Item nine, Lincoln University Student Representative update. Mrs., Ms. Carolyn Winjarro.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Council as a whole. Um, I just have three updates, and to begin with, I want to say, Cassino Night was a great success. Um, thank you to Madam Mayor and all council members who were present. Um, this past weekend, we had freshmen move in, and we had over three hundred plus freshmen come into the university and join the Blue Tiger family. Um, we officially start school on the twenty-seventh, which is next Monday, and all returning students will be coming back on the twenty-fourth. So, we look forward to having school back in session, and also a reminder about Dr. Wolf's inauguration, which will be on October fifth at ten a.m., followed by the inaugural ball at seven p.m. at the link. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Winjarro. Item ten, presentations from the gallery on specific bills, and I'll start with who we have signed up, and then we'll, we'll, uh, let's see here. Start with Charles Jackson. I don't know if he's still here, no? Yes? No? Okay, he's gone. Um, and Andrew may be gone also, Sartor, Sartoris? I'm not sure. Sartoris, okay. Uh, Chris Graham and Rich Callahan, Dan Green. Okay, um, so, Mr. Homer. All right, welcome.
Good evening, my name is Homer Cavett. I live at three-twenty-six East Dunkland. I'd like to ask you all a question. How would you feel if I bought some property next to you, rented it out, and my tenants would throw their trash in your backyard? I can just imagine what you would do to me. This is a problem that I have. I've got landlords who don't live in my area, live out in the other end of town. Last spring, we got a letter from the city, several homeowners on my street, that we need to clean up our alley, or the city was gonna take action against us, okay? I get letters, information on the people that's dumping the trash. Called the police, this is just the other day, they referred me to code enforcement. Code enforcement says there's nothing they can do, their hands are tied. What do you do?
I wonder if we could connect you with staff to see what specifically is happening there? Would that be maybe Mr. Sanders?
Well, what I'm saying is, why isn't something done to the landlord?
Well, I know you're, I think you're speaking on one of the bills that's introduced, the item twelve C about-
Right.
-the single-family residence and duplex units.
Why isn't anything being done? Why, when I go to the city, I get referred to everybody else? Why do we have code enforcement? Why are these landlords being able to rent in the middle of the city, live out in their beautiful homes, and talk about the city? All the things that's going on in the city? That's what upsets me.
So, you're in, you're in favor of the, the bill?
I'm in favor, whatever can be done with these absent landlords to do something about their tenants, all right? Why do the tenant, I mean, the landlord get away? I gotta pick up their trash. Now, here's the thing, I thought about this, and I know you all don't want this to happen, but what if I take the trash, pick it up, and take it out to their beautiful neighborhoods, and drop it in their yards? I bet something would be done then.
Well, thank you, Homer, and we will, the bill that's being introduced will, is, is supposed to try to address that.
You're saying thank you, you're saying thank you, but this has been going on for I don't know how long. You know, I don't want to hear thank you, I want to see something done about it.
All right, and if you would like, if we, if you'd like us to connect Sonny, or Mr. Sanders about your specific area as well that you were just talking about? Councilwoman Ward. I'm sorry, and it's Homer, and could you spell the last name just so we get it correct?
C A V I T T E, the third.
C A V I T T E, okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
You are in Ward two, correct?
Yes.
Okay, I'm your representative, and I know that area that you're referring to. I do get a lot of emails, I get a lot of phone calls about just trash in general there. And, and I do know that our Planning and Protective Services group does post signs repeatedly, and it, it just seems to be, and I live in that neighborhood, so I understand. My husband and I pick up trash along West Atchison every night, but, but that's, you know, that's beside the point. We will, uh, look into that. Our, our Director of Planning and Protective Services is here, and, and his inspector, I mean, I don't know what else I could-
You know, this is not the first, second, or third time. You got a big sign that says litter control area. City comes at me. The person who owns the property, nothing said to them. You know? A lot of their tenants can't afford a trash receptacle. This goes back to the city trash. You know, you rent to people who can't afford their trash, they're having a struggle, they're struggling to pay their utility bills. So, how they gonna pay for trash?
Well, we are looking at a bill right now that will change that to make the landlords responsible, whether it's single-family duplex or multiple-family dwelling, that the landlord has to supply the trash.
Well, that bill should have been passed three years ago.
Okay, we are working on it.
So, if you read about me dumping trash in somebody else's yard, you know why? Because I'm getting tired of it.
All right, any questions? Okay, next, we have Mr. Nimrod Chapel, Jr., signed up for charter amendments. Or, I think it says charter amendment? Is that correct?
Yes, yeah.
Okay. Okay, welcome.
I have some, uh, some concerns that were brought about with the charter process and that review process. I'll bring those up later at a different venue. I think everything that was here basically now has been tabled, so, thanks for the opportunity.
Okay, all right, thank you very much. All right, item eleven, consent agenda, is there a motion to approve?
So do.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item twelve, bills introduced, we have twenty eighteen forty-five.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, amending Chapter thirty, solid waste, Article one, code of the City of Jefferson pertaining to the definition of responsible party.
Mrs. Abbott.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. There's a presentation, sorry. And I'll make this quick tonight. The proposed bill would amend the Chapter thirty solid waste article, changing the definition of responsible party. Currently, the responsible party identifies or, um, has a clause in there that the responsible party is the property owner, but the property owner may, um, assign those rights to the tenant of, uh, single-family and duplex units only. And, um, this amendment would change the definition of responsible party to just essentially reading, um, the owner of the property is responsible to obtain and maintain solid waste or trash service. And, um, the, um, the assignment of, um, the responsibility of obtaining trash service, I do believe was implemented in approximately two thousand and nine with the, the cart system. And, um, we, um, over the years, code enforcement, the inspector, inspectors are constantly encountering, encountering problems such as the, um, what's up on the screen, ninety-six no trash service violations. And then number ninety-six is during a period of November one, twenty seventeen, through August fifteenth of twenty eighteen. Um, this is just a photo of where the property inspectors have encountered, um, this property not having trash service, and if you take a look behind the door, trash is piled up to the second pane of the window in the door. And, um, so, total of ninety-six, eighty of them were one, uh, and two-unit rental properties, eighty of them are eighty-three percent. Uh, nine of them were three-plus rental units, or seven were owner-occupied. Illegal dumping, um, is also another, uh, potential cause of having, um, no trash service, where, um, in twenty-two cases, twenty-two were traced back to, back to rental properties. And what we mean by traced back is, you know, there was some identifying information within the trash itself. Uh, three were traced back to private citizens, which is only twelve percent of the illegal dumping. We have a accumulation of trash violations. Since November one, we've had three hundred and fifty-two accumulation of trash. Uh, two hundred and ninety-two approximately, or eighty-three percent, were traced back to rental properties, and sixty were owner-occupied. So, um, staff have taken a look at better ways to, uh, giving our staff, uh, tools to complete enforcement, um, actions appropriately. We feel that changing the definition, that the property owner is required to obtain trash would assist in, um, curbing these figures down. Um, currently, a residential cart for, um, a sixty-five gallon is fifteen dollars and fifty-two dollars, excuse me, fifteen dollars and fifty-two cents per month, uh, with the single-stream recycling cart included with that rate. Um, that's the twenty-six, twenty-eighteen rates that began June first. Uh, I know I'm kind of flying through this, um, just because of time, but I would be happy to answer any questions on this proposed amendment.
Thank you. Any questions for Mrs. Abbott? Okay, thanks. So, uh, now we'll go on into thirteen. All right, bills pending, twenty eighteen twenty-eight.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute a development agreement with F and F Development LLC pertaining to the redevelopment of the five-hundred block of Missouri Boulevard.
Mr. Marash.
Thank you. Um, this clerk indicates a development agreement with F and F, and this is really concerning the Saint Mary's redevelopment properties, but, but, uh, basically, this agreement will transfer property to F and F, uh, that's owned by the city, shown as owned by the city, so clear the title of some of that property. In exchange for that, uh, F and F is agreeing to donate additional right-of-way for construction of a greenway trail along Bolivar and Dunkland, and also pay fifteen thousand dollars towards the, uh, construction of that greenway.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Marash? Any deliberation? Roll call, please.
Mahalovich.
Aye.
Prather.
Aye.
Schreiber.
Aye.
Ward.
Aye.
Wiseman.
Aye.
Fitzwater.
Aye.
Graham.
Aye.
Hensley.
Aye.
Hussey.
Kimna.
Aye.
Bill passes, twenty eighteen twenty-nine.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, vacating and discontinuing a portion of the five-hundred block of West Elm Street right-of-way.
Mr. Marash.
Thank you, and I, and if I could, I could explain, uh, number twenty-nine, thirty, and thirty-one with, uh, all pertaining similarly to the redevelopment of this old Saint Mary's property with F and F, where, uh, these will all vacate either right-of-way or easements, which are all shown in the packet on a drawing, but, uh, again, vacation of easements, clear up the titles of those properties, some old easements that existed from in-lot, outlots, things like that, maybe sewer easements, things of that nature.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Marash? Any deliberation? Roll call, please.
Prather.
Aye.
Schreiber.
Aye.
Ward.
Aye.
Wiseman.
Aye.
Fitzwater.
Aye.
Graham.
Aye.
Hensley.
Aye.
Hussey.
Kimna.
Aye.
Mahalovich.
Aye.
Bill passes, twenty eighteen thirty.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, vacating and discontinuing a portion of the six-hundred block of Walnut Street right-of-way.
And Mr. Marash has already given us the update. Any council questions, deliberation? Roll call, please.
Schreiber.
Aye.
Ward.
Aye.
Wiseman.
Aye.
Fitzwater.
Aye.
Graham.
Aye.
Hensley.
Aye.
Hussey.
Kimna.
Aye.
Mahalovich.
Aye.
Prather.
Aye.
Schreiber.
Aye.
Ward.
Aye.
Bill passes, twenty eighteen thirty-one. An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, vacating and discontinuing utility easements in the previously vacated parts of the four-hundred and five-hundred blocks of West Miller Street, the five-hundred and six-hundred block of Harrison Street, the six-hundred block of West Elm Street, and an unnamed alley south of in-lot numbers seven sixty-eight, seven sixty-nine, and seven seventy.
Any council discussion? Roll call, please.
Ward.
Aye.
Wiseman.
Aye.
Fitzwater.
Aye.
Graham.
Aye.
Hensley.
Aye.
Hussey.
Kimna.
Aye.
Mahalovich.
Aye.
Prather.
Aye.
Schreiber.
Aye.
Ward.
Aye.
Wiseman.
Aye.
Fitzwater.
Aye.
Graham.
Aye.
Hensley.
Aye.
Hussey.
Kimna.
Aye.
Mahalovich.
Aye.
Prather.
Aye.
Bill passes, twenty eighteen thirty-six. An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute a supplemental agreement with the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission for surface transportation program funds.
Mr. Marash.
Thank you. Uh, this bill would lengthen our timeframe in that agreement. Uh, currently, we have a grant to study the Clark Avenue corridor, uh, beginning at the interchange there at, uh, McCarty and, and Clark, extending over, uh, to, uh, Atchison Street, I believe is the name. Uh, anyway, uh, but it links to the time where we've been meetings, uh, with Bartlett and Wes is our designer on this. This is a city-county project named in the sales tax, so, uh, MoDOT's very particular about the timeframes in these agreements, and this would allow us to keep working on that agreement. We should be actually having a public meeting in about the next month about this project to flush out some of the options, so, we are moving along, but this gives us a little more time to complete that.
Thank you. Any questions or council deliberation? Uh, Mahalovich? Oh, I'm sorry, roll call, please.
Fitzwater.
Aye.
Graham.
Aye.
Hensley.
Aye.
Hussey.
Kimna.
Aye.
Mahalovich.
Aye.
Bill passes, twenty eighteen thirty.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, vacating and discontinuing a portion of the six-hundred block of Walnut Street right-of-way.
And Mr. Marash has already given us the update. Any council questions, deliberation? Roll call, please.
Schreiber.
Aye.
Ward.
Aye.
Wiseman.
Aye.
Fitzwater.
Aye.
Graham.
Aye.
Hensley.
Aye.
Hussey.
Kimna.
Aye.
Mahalovich.
Aye.
Prather.
Aye.
Schreiber.
Aye.
Ward.
Aye.
Wiseman.
Aye.
Fitzwater.
Aye.
Graham.
Aye.
Hensley.
Aye.
Hussey.
Kimna.
Aye.
Mahalovich.
Aye.
Prather.
Aye.
Schreiber.
Aye.
Ward.
Aye.
Bill passes, twenty eighteen thirty-six.
An ordinance submitting section twenty-nine dash one fifty-one, charge for notice of intent to disconnect, and appendix Y, schedule of administrative fees, permits, licenses, and other charges of the code of the City of Jefferson, Missouri.
Mr. Marash.
Uh, as clerk indicated, this, uh, would modify a fee, and related to wastewater bills, uh, that's currently in appendix Y, that's, I think it's set at twenty-seven dollars. Uh, we had not charged that fee in the past, and this would modify it to ten dollars, a flat fee of ten dollars. Uh, basically, uh, this is, has to do with, uh, delinquent wastewater bills, and, uh, when we make an attempt to collect those, we do phone calls and things of that nature. If we can't reach those people, we do send out, uh, actual notices, place them on the property, uh, so, to give us a call and try to pay that bill. So, it lowers that to ten dollars. Roughly, a bill for wastewater could be around that thirty-dollar level, so, trying to make it a little more affordable, uh, for the people who are delinquent.
Any questions or deliberation? Roll call, please.
Wiseman.
Aye.
Fitzwater.
Aye.
Graham.
Aye.
Hensley.
Aye.
Hussey.
Kimna.
Aye.
Mahalovich.
Aye.
Prather.
Aye.
Schreiber.
Aye.
Ward.
Aye.
Bill passes, twenty eighteen thirty-six.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute a supplemental agreement with the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission for surface transportation program funds.
Mr. Marash.
Thank you. Uh, this bill would, uh, lengthen our timeframe in that agreement. Uh, currently, we have a grant to study the Clark Avenue corridor, uh, beginning at the interchange there at, uh, McCarty and, and Clark, extending over, uh, to, uh, Atchison Street, I believe is the name. Uh, anyway, uh, but it links to the time where we've been meetings, uh, with Bartlett and Wes is our designer on this. This is a city-county project named in the sales tax, so, uh, MoDOT's very particular about the timeframes in these agreements, and this would allow us to keep working on that agreement. We should be actually having a public meeting in about the next month about this project to flush out some of the options, so, we are moving along, but this gives us a little more time to complete that.
Thank you. Any questions or council deliberation? Uh, Mahalovich? Oh, I'm sorry, roll call, please.
Fitzwater.
Aye.
Graham.
Aye.
Hensley.
Aye.
Hussey.
Kimna.
Aye.
Mahalovich.
Aye.
Prather.
Aye.
Schreiber.
Aye.
Ward.
Aye.
Wiseman.
Aye.
Fitzwater.
Aye.
Graham.
Aye.
Hensley.
Aye.
Hussey.
Kimna.
Aye.
Mahalovich.
Aye.
Prather.
Aye.
Schreiber.
which are the end product of our wastewater treatment process. That would be a field, land applied. It would help us have additional stories during wet weather times, so we bid a project. This was called out in our master plan, so we bid a little bit different project that was called out in that to save some funds, and we have this contract proposed with TEB Constructors.
Any questions or deliberation? Roll call, please.
Graham.
Aye.
Hensley.
Aye.
Hussey. Kimna.
Aye.
Mahalovich.
Aye.
Prather.
Aye.
Schreiber.
Aye.
Ward.
Aye.
Wiseman.
Aye.
Fitzwater.
Aye.
Bill passes. Thirty-eight through forty-two are the charter amendments. Couple of questions out of respect for the people who came that left before they were able to speak. Can that be put on the, I guess it can be put on the informal even though the sponsor's not here, since Fitzwater is a co-sponsor, correct?
Fitzwater's a sponsor.
I thought it said Hussey.
Says sponsor Fitzwater.
Oh, I'm sorry. You're right. Thank you. It's been a long night. Now, the other thing is timing-wise, in order to get on the ballot, what was, what was the timing on those?
It would need to, in order to get on the November ballot, it would need to be done at this meeting before August 28th, I believe. But, you know, there's, there's nothing magical about the November ballot, so if this gets put on the informal calendar, it would, the next available election would be the April election.
Okay. Councilman Graham?
Madam Mayor, I know that Councilman Fitzwater is the sponsor, and he can put these on, asks that these be put on the informal calendar, and I would like to suggest that he do put these on the informal calendar. But not only that, I think that these charter changes are so important that these needs to be discussed as a whole council level, maybe at a special meeting or something. But I think that these are very important, and I think that we should bring in the members who were a part of recommending these changes, to have a conversation with them as well, too. So I would recommend two things. One, that be placed on the informal calendar, and then also, we have a, a special meeting to address these different charter amendment or changes. And then if we need to bring in the, the charter members who was a part of that committee and, and get more feedback and dialogue as to the reason why these changes were, were being presented. Because to me, this is like changing our constitution. And I think that we should take this, and I know we are, we should take this very seriously, and so I would propose that.
Thank you, man, thank you, Councilman Graham. Councilman Fitzwater?
I appreciate the comments from my colleague in the fourth ward, and I echo his comments. I'd like to preface by thanking the members of the charter committee because they did an incredible job. They met a number of times. I think it was at all the meetings except for one. Councilman Hussey was at most of the meetings. Other members of council who weren't even responsible for it came in to pick up a piece of what was going on. But as Councilman Graham indicated, this is the soul of our community. I mean, it's a document. I've had an opportunity to talk to some of the members of the original committee in addition to the, the current committee, and I think Councilman Graham raises some good opportunities that all of the members of this council ought to have an opportunity to discuss the document, other members of the public, and I thank the members of the public that did show up because they had testimony at most of the meetings. So with that being said, I would like to put 28, 2018-38, 39, 40, 41, and 42 on the informal calendar.
Thank you, Councilman Fitzwater, and if you and Councilman Graham would want to talk about your idea to get council together to discuss, certainly that would-
I think, you know, having a special work session to, to address these issues would certainly be, would be, be a good start, so.
Okay, thank you. Councilman, I'm sorry.
Just the logistical issues. For the April election, we would need final ballot language by mid-January, and so that's kind of the time, timeframe we're looking at if we're looking at the April 2019 election, is that we need final ballot language by mid-January. So that's just for, for informational purposes.
Thank you, and certainly, I do appreciate that, but for me, I'm not even looking at a date and time to get it to, to the ballot. I'm just looking at making sure that we got this thing right, and then we're about to date for hitting a ballot later on. So my main concern is to make sure that we're getting this thing right, so. But thank you for that information, though.
Thank you. Item 15, Resolutions. We have RS-2018-10.
A resolution authorizing the mayor and this city clerk to execute a letter of engagement with Gilmore and Bell, PC.
Mr. Mollman?
Thank you. This, of course, this resolution appeared in front of the council at the last meeting. There was some concern about some of the more open-ended provisions in this engagement letter with Gilmore and Bell to work as special counsel on the, on the Missouri State Penitentiary Program. And so I reached back out to, to Gilmore and Bell and shared the concerns of the council with them, and they sat down and sharpened their pencils and hopefully addressed some of the council's concerns, most of the council's concerns with, with the opening of this engage, gave some more tangible estimate, time estimates, and then also gave a mechanism to make sure, kind of a checking-in period, to make sure that we're heading in the right direction on this project before additional funds are expended. Particularly, what they have proposed is that they would cap billing at $25,000 until the city has selected a developer for the project, and the developer has escrow funds with the city to pay for special counsel fees, or if the city council has made a, a direct, a direct authorization to spend more than $25,000. So, so the, you know, they're, they're looking at a, a cost limitation of $25,000 through the selection of a developer process, which is, you know, a substantial part of the program that we would ask them to, to, to work on. And so I think that is a, provides some, some assurances to the council that we're not going to be having really large legal bills on, you know, the very first step of selecting a developer. Additionally, there was an addition that I added to the resolution that limits payment of invoices out of this engagement letter to the, from the hotel motel accommodations tax unless otherwise approved by the city council. So the default would be that bills on this project would come out of the tourism tax funds unless the city council, for whatever reason, gave specific authorization to, to expend out of other funds.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Mr. Mollman? Is there a motion? I'm sorry, Councilman Prather.
Oh, I'd like some clarification on where the money's coming from. I'd be against this if it's already stating we have to come out of tourism fund. I know we can find the money elsewhere, but I just don't think we need to open that door at this moment if we don't have to. So where specifically does it state that money's coming from in here?
Sure. And it says that in Section 3 of the resolution.
Okay, and it states that we have it, we could take it wherever we need it?
So what Section 3 says is that invoices incurred under the letter engagement shall be paid out of the funds raised by the city 7% tax on hotel and motel accommodations unless otherwise authorized by the city council.
Okay, so if we vote on that tonight and we, we pass it, will it come back to the council for approval to where the money's coming from, or you just automatically take it out of the tourism fund?
That is, that is where the money would come from when their, when their invoices came along, unless the city council said otherwise.
Yeah, I'd, I'd have a hard time. I think we need to do this, but not necessarily the money from there. I think the money should come from another source, for example, the general fund. Just don't open that door yet for the tourism fund because it's not necessarily for what we have promised the citizens, in my opinion, for our conference center.
Councilman Mahalovich?
Okay, it says, under Section 3, unless otherwise authorized by city council, when would we make our first draw onto any kind of account for these services?
When would we make a first draw? If this passed tonight, I would anticipate having a conference call with the attorneys tomorrow, and so billing would start in August. We could see a first bill in the beginning of September for work in August.
So it's, it could be a resolution to, to direct the funding for that to be other than this funding source, should we so desire, right?
Yes. If, if, for whatever, if for whatever reason, on September 4th, we wanted to come back and say, "We'd rather that first bill get paid out of whatever," we could, we could do that. And, you know, you know, if, if, the point is, the point was in Section 3 is to identify a consistent funding source, but also give flexibility if flexibility is needed. And that was, I did that to reflect what I gathered out of comments last meeting. That's, that's the reason, that's the reason that it is, it's presented the way it is.
Any further council questions for Mr. Mollman? Councilwoman Wiseman?
I, I just want to point out, I think this is a good place for the funds to begin to come from. This, this company has been involved in a lot of TIFs and involved in a lot of super TIFs. In fact, if, if I remember correctly, probably they're the only company that we talked about that's ever been involved in super TIFs, and I think that's what we're really looking for, for, is trying to get other funding available specifically paid for by the developers. So this is really just a jumping point, and I think that we could look at this on a monthly basis to try to supplement that if, if we needed to or wanted to, and maybe at the finance level. But I think we need a, I think we need a place to fund this, and I think that the tourism fund is a great place, because that's where we're going with this. We're going to look at this conference center. We're, we're going to look at, you know, this area and develop it, and we've, we've got to have some money to do this, and I think this is an excellent place to start. I don't think that, that it should fund all of it, and I don't think that it will. I, I think these, this TIF, this super TIF idea, I, I think are going to be really good other options that developers, developers are going to end up paying for.
Councilman Hensley?
Thank you, and I would just like to echo Councilwoman Wiseman's comments, specifically with respect to the conference center. One of the things this is going to be looking at, or that this firm is going to be looking at is project feasibility, and a big part of that, a potential centerpiece of the permitted uses in the transfer contract, you know, allows for a convention center, a conference center, a civic center. So I, I think that the funds that go into determining feasibility for such a facility would, you know, be appropriate to come out of the funds that are set aside for the construction of the facility. And that makes a lot of sense. Thank you.
Councilman Prather?
It sounds like the door is open to make that decision at a different time according to the wording, so I'm for this, to just move on and then decide that later.
Okay, any further questions? If not, entertain a motion to, to approve 2018-10.
So move.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion, deliberation? Roll call, please.
Hensley.
Aye.
Hussey. Kimna.
Aye.
Mahalovich.
Aye.
Prather.
Aye.
Schreiber.
Aye.
Ward.
Aye.
Wiseman.
Aye.
Fitzwater.
Aye.
Graham.
Aye.
Resolution passes. Item 16, no, no one signed up. Item 17, council presentation topics. Eighteen new business, nineteen unfinished business, twenty.
I moved to adjourn.
All in favor, say aye. All right, have a great-